Lake Region Library. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much for taking the time. Good to be here as always. I will keep it relatively brief because I was here a few weeks ago with the most talkative youngest assistant state attorney in time to go over our annual report. And so this budget is just kind of a reflection of that that was presented earlier. The biggest things that are different on our core tax budget from 2023 to 2024, we are in the midst of trying to propose a new full-time position for the children's librarian. It is currently a part-time position, 29 hours a week, unbenefited. And the children that we come, that we see come into the library and in our community in general, we firmly believe could be greatly, greatly benefited by having one consistent person who was able to take on, you know, all the programming and all of the book acquisition and managing space and everything right now. It's kind of being spread between a couple employees and some other things. So we're just, we're really hoping to, to grow the library in its way. We had 25,000 people come into the library in 2022, and a conservative estimate would be that at least 15,000 of those were children under 18, as, as the law dictates. Of the 19,000 materials that we had checked out, physical materials from the library itself, well over 10,000 of those were children, young adults, teen, those kinds of materials. And so we, I mean, we are right next door to the middle school. That is definitely an age of rapid decline all the time. We want to keep providing a space for kiddos to come and, and be safe and happy and learn some things and participate in, you know, social interactions and other kind of positive things for that. So that would be the biggest proposed change. The next biggest would be our building maintenance line item. We are in need of a new HVAC system. It has not completely stopped working yet, but we are close. And it's current, it's just ineffectual and uncontrollable by staff. It's a gentleman in Minot physically has to drive here and plug in his computer to change the thermostat. And that is not the same thing. And so this is a one-year projection of $15,000. It's a count line 44,300. If you see what I sent you at the grid bottom. And, and that would be about half of what the system would cost with the expectation that the library foundation, which is obviously separate, would fundraise the other half. So to achieve those two main goals while keeping most everything else the same, keeping the lights on and the homeworking and books coming in, the official request would be to up our 3.07 mils that were levied in 2023 to a full four mils, we're already counting. This also includes requesting six mils from the city from our five that were levied in 2023. That request was made last week and then like going back next week to continue talking and seeing what that would look like. I would welcome any questions or concerns or anecdotes, fact jokes.
Anybody have any questions for Maddie?
So just for clarification, Maddie, the five mils you gave from the city is what you can ask for?
Um, so under municipal code, I can ask for one more. Century Code states five, I can't ask for six. That's what I have asked for.
So then your max?
Yes, that would max us out.
So then what do you do now? When your max is on, Century Code, what happens in 2024?
Um, so then if we get those mils in 2024 and everything's creepy smoothie and then something comes up down the line and we need a large, regular infusion of some sort, uh, we have a couple ways that we can do that. We can go to the foundation for support. Or we can, there's a process to add this as a ballot item to raise the mil level for the library that we're told during the November election.
Another avenue to make a profit?
Uh, no, we don't, uh, we don't, we do not really exist for many revenue streams, certainly not a profit. We're definitely services and service-based. We can, you know, this, this budget doesn't reflect the private donations that we get every year because we funnel those through the foundation with the expectation that, that it's covering special projects, bigger scale purchases. We've been in the library in the last five years. There's a self-check kiosk. That was purchased by the foundation, you know, that was an $18,000 expense that the city and county didn't have to take over. The foundation was able to let that. But yes, that is, that's the question.
You both put grants in state.
Of course, yep, yep. We get funding, we get both state aid from the state library and, and several grants per year. From the state library, since I've been there, we've taken in, probably we've had four or five grants in the last two years since I've been there, which was up from zero in 20.
Anything else? Anything for us, Maddie?
No, I don't think so. Thank you so much for taking the time. Hope to see you at the library programs coming up. We had a wildly successful visit from the Minot Zoo last week. I think we saw 250 people smooshed in between the library and the middle school.
I'm just, just curious, what animal did you bring?
Uh, Tom the milk snake, Speedy the box turtle, and Pumpkin, the three-ton skink. So it was a reptile day. Yes, we had requested the armadillo, but we did not get any animals. Next time.
Next time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up, Ashley.
Good afternoon again. I'm Ashley Peterson. I'm at my current in New Tewa for Lake Region District Health Unit on the second floor. With me I have Beth and Heidler, who we both admire twice a as my family's moving due in the order. So I handed out a budget for you when I first walked in here today, and I can go over that briefly. It would be the first two pages of the revenue that we'll get. We hope to get one from mill levy dollars. And the other revenue is from insurance. Grant money is where we get a lot of it and some of the other services we provide to our communities. And then the third page is our expenditure report. So you can see, I mean, everything from salary to medical records and the things we need to run our health unit in the four counties. So it's about $2.3 million right now. After that, if you look on the fourth page, that's really where we did what we're asking for in mill levy dollars from Ramsey County is the bar rate is at 3,000, 324,195 dollars. So this is, that would be your portion of the total healthiness expense that isn't covered by either revenue we bring in or by a grant. And our cap is five mils, and this is put us at 4.5 mils. This would be your contribution to that for those mils. What questions do you have for me?
Yeah, we got 4.3 last year.
Correct.
285,000, I think it was.
I believe so. But this is also based on the change to land value. I imagine that your land value will go up when that gets back in. So that may bring our, our bills down a stitch as well.
Well, you're on that board to be on dad.
Well, I think we do have everything set up with the other colonies already.
Right, we went through financing money and they agree on their contribution of mils. And then next week we'll be with Pierce and Maddie to get there.
Yeah, you're already on all that again, I'd say.
Correct, yes, sir.
With the budget, I think there was a 2% suggested raise.
And that is back to the end of the number as well.
Yep, and that was just to get about the 100%. Because they were already at 98.
Yeah, so it's that 100% market value as the year 2021 for our employees.
There was a lot of discussion on the last year. But that's really the key, I think, to decide. I mean, we decided the budget was fairly close to last year. And one of the reasons was we were losing.
We had two.
One of the biggest changes was the grant from.
The $100,000.
Yeah.
So we got a, a bonus grant that I didn't know we were going to get until going a plus. So that brings down our expenses that we can't cover from grants in general or the income that we bring in through insurance and donations, so.
And family planning was the biggest change for it, right?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Family planning's budget has continuously gone down. Last year, last calendar year, the board agreed to in kind a lot of the money that we had lost to keep a full-time family planning employee. Now that the budget's gotten cut even more from our grant funding, we brought that employee down to part-time. But still, we still have the capability to serve our community, but just at a part-time capacity, but still we have a full-time employee working another program under a grant.
Basically, it took the employee, took part-time on one side and part-time on the other side to have a full-time employee.
So we're good, correct. So we're not losing a non-employee. We're still keeping them here as a best, sort of employee, and still keeping our doors open to family planning. Unfortunately, it sounds like plan, the budget for family planning is either get pods or potentially we might not be getting any longer after this calendar year with some changes in that presidency of their moms. I'd ever be worried of that, so.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Anybody have any questions for Ashley?
So the mold revises this in October.
Right.
Have you had another question? Have you?
Oh, I guess I do have one thing to add. With debt taken over, we did decide to contract Ashley for two months to get some payback. So that, like the grant writing and all that, it's not just here you go, throw you to the wolves. Hopefully it goes a lot smoother than we had before and should be a lot easier. So there's a little bit of expense there, most two months, basically.
Yeah, budgeting, what I would have, I would have hit my one-year mark in October. I, I get healthcare from my husband, so I don't need the extra financial benefits. So we're actually saving money.
So she dropped, so basically after October 1st, she will be contracted. So it saves the money of us paying social security and all that stuff.
Okay?
Yeah. Awesome. You have, you have other questions, both of you. So thank you for your time.
And I think what the process has been in the past is we'll have a joint meeting of the commissions and approve your budget that way. And we usually do that at about the same time we do our common budget. All right.
Wonderful, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you. Lisa. Lake Region here this summer.
Happy, Ellen and Candy, Sam. Our budget didn't change much for mere a year. I want to thank you guys personally for the ARBA funds that hopefully will be distributed to a roofer in, hopefully this season, but I don't know. Any of you know any roofers that'll call me back and come in the building? That would be great. It's really difficult to get people to come. That being said, the repair that we had last fall has been holding better than any repair we've had in the past. So we go up there and I don't personally check it, but I have two people that check, make sure everything's kosher, and it hasn't. And that's been the longest repair since I've been there, four years, that has ever worked, so. This, the roof is not leaking. I am using the courtroom as a courtroom, and that is great. But I do want to thank you, and I hope to use those funds to fix that rubber portion.
Was there any noticeable damage with the leaks that were occurring?
That occurred? In the inside, there's about five tiles on the courtroom ceiling that you could see have had stains.
Sure.
And they need to be pushed up. And then there's three or four chairs that, not the oldest chairs, not the ones that came from the original courthouse or anything, they're wood chairs that had some water stain. I think can be fixed to look normal again. Other than that, a little bit of the woodwork on the ceiling, I can't tell though if that was from this time or the many, many previous times. So not a ton. I think we saved a lot by those, you know, $15 kitty pools. And they stay up on the second floor for emergencies. But yeah, not that I know of. The interior, when Dennis Nelson Island, who did that repair, he said that everything did look really good once it was all dry. He said it would take, you know, a major, major event to rep that building. So that's good. The copper sealed up really nice. So I think that just, you know, the rubber repair and the drain repair will be sufficient. I know last year I was, I still love a ramp, but that it's not getting hard. So we have to pivot and do the best we can, do the best we can for that building, so.
So if any roofers are watching, please contact Lisa.
Please contact me. Call me back, show up. Anyway, but that is, the good news is it's not, it's not leaking this summer. I'm able to get tours. It's been really busy in the museum, which is great, but traffic is way up. So I would love to see the tourism numbers for just that was like in general this year. And, you know, we have like a big meeting tomorrow with the gaming division that they're going to meet there to talk about the legislative updates. So just things like that. We also were lucky to get two grants. That was like area foundation and the Lake Region Community Fund. Finally get a kitchen area, a sink plumbed in to the postmaster's office, which I've been, you know, since I've been there, that's been one of those things. So we're excited to work on that. We'll offer a lot more. We'll just be able to do more things there, offer different classes. And yeah, it's been busy. So the city last, I don't know if it was like last November, they gave us $7,500 extra to have a part-time employee come in place. And I have had Caitlin Kilogram come on, it's, she's contracted basically, but she's my part-time worker. And she, like over the art fest, she works for me. And then she comes in weekly, so it doesn't look like a ton, but she is a huge help. And she is a museum studies, she's going for her master's in museum studies. And she takes classes online for that. So she's a really good fit because she knows more about artifacts than I do. And so I'm enjoying that. So if you saw on the budget, it shows payroll or salary, and I added in her amount. My, my salary did not go up this year that I know of, and I would have raised. So you'll see that jump, and that's not for me, that's for that part-time employee. And then one other thing is ready, you guys have been in the museum. He's our gentleman that works through Nikoa or experienced works past. He will be ending his contract with Nikoa in about six or eight months. So we won't have him around. And because he was technically kind of a free body, I'll, I'll see if I can get someone else in that position. But yeah, do you guys have any other questions? I know I kind of rambled on, but it is, it's busy and that's good. Sometimes overwhelming, but.
Well, it's good to see you, and hopefully we can find a roofer and get that.
I would love that. I would love that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Lisa. Star, welcome.
Thank you. I'm the world, what does it mean?
You had two other colonies this month?
Oh. I would like you to look at this colored sheet. I don't know if you guys have color.
I don't think so, but I do.
What, what is it?
Is it this one here?
Yeah. So this is the easiest one that I could have figured out to use because it has the, the numbers on it. So as you can see, there are two different projected. The first one is leaving everything basically the same except for all the normal capital improvements or whatever. The second one is if we were to increase boarding to $100 a day instead of $80 a day. So the, and I'm going to do the 911 budget first because that's pretty easy. In that budget, it includes a new type of EMV card. The Department of Health is the people that we currently use for EMV cards through the App, the State AppCo sector. And the Department of Health has decided not to endorse those cards anymore. So we have to find a new system. And this one will be through AppCo. And it's about $8,800, and that's for cards, the new cards and training. There's a computer in there for the 911 coordinator, the technology fund of $20,000, and then the central square maintenance for $20,694, 88 cents. Other than that, it's just all the maintenance agreements and everything else that goes along with 911. So the 911 portion for Ramsey County is $135,305. The RRC budget, it only includes two new computers, and that is the only improvements or anything that was added to their budget. On the LEC side, oh, the RRC budget for Ramsey County would be $104,370.50. And that's based on usage, like how many people you send. The LEC side of the budget, there's some great discussion on this side. So the first one, there's a $120,000 generator, laundry room remodel in the jail for $5,000, a new phone system for the entire building for $60,000. Bathroom venting, we found out that somebody had stuffed insulation and capped our bathroom vents down at the LEC many years ago. We don't remember. That's $11,546. The central square maintenance for the jail portion of $21,905. Two computers in corrections, a family practice table for our med room, a new behavioral health budget. Behavioral health is becoming a big thing with the state. We're just lucky enough to have somebody in our building that is actually able to do that. And so we set aside approximately $8,640. And that's for training and supplies. And then two additional correctional staff. So the.
Did you tell the, mentioning the city that you took two out?
I sure did.
So are we adding two or taking two out?
I had four.
Oh, you had four.
I had four.
I don't know how we're ever going to increase the capacity if we don't have the staffing to do so. So something we may want to take a look at, or we can take a look more tomorrow at our LEC meeting, but.
There have been, so we have, in my short time in my office today, there was questions brought up about is $120,000 enough for a generator? Apparently that was, the quote that I got was like two years old. So, but there is talk now with Jim to, it all depends, it all really depends on how everybody wants to proceed. Like, I know there are discussions about possibly getting a committee and looking at new jails. So do we need a generator this year? Maybe not. Maybe we could get away with hatching this one together. Are taking, Jim's thinking like maybe $30,000 instead of $120,000? I, I think that if somebody really, we need to really sit down and decide what we're doing. Are we going to continue to nickel and dime our building here? Or?
Fix and maintain it properly?
Right. And I think that that is one of the big issues is like, like for instance, our phone system has been outdated for 10 years.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah.
So, um, so those numbers you had, what are you talking about today and everything?
They, probably sort of, they would be on a sheet that looks like this. Like that one. If not, I can send it to you. Because I printed everything you sent. Okay. We'll get it, I can, I can send it to you. Only have a couple minutes, I'll go a minute.
Okay, the side boxes, that's where you're going to be mostly generating.
Yeah. If, if you're willing to look at this, I'll get this here. Something to take a look at, I can.
So that 17.75% next to the Ramsey County.
That would be the amount of increase from last year.
And that's for the LEC, the 911.
That's all together.
All together.
All together.
And that's with this one?
Yeah. That's LEC, 911, RRC.
So a $100 increase from 2021. I know where those costs are coming from, but maybe for explanation, we could run through some of those?
It is the upkeep of the building, I think a lot of it is, and the state mandates that we're under. The state was just there on Wednesday of last week. And they go through our building almost with a fine tooth comb. And we have to meet the hundred and nine standards that they go through. And with the employee turnover that we've had, we don't have any longevity employees. So they look at that.
I think there was a couple different items between twenty twenty-one and this year currently. The big one would be the non-compliance order.
Yes.
Covid obviously had an effect with the reduction of people being moved out of the facility into D O C R.
Right.
And then the non-compliance order with reduction of inmates.
Right.
And then the high rate of turnout or in training cost comes into play. But, and then, you know, as Ramsey County, we're sitting there averaging thirty-seven inmates a day, which adds up in a hurry. You know, we always, always see those invoices come in from the L E C, you know, around a hundred thousand dollars or greater every month. So.
With purpose of our, all the way. Just for us.
Just for us.
And the sad part is that crime's not going away. It seems to be intensifying.
So if anybody has any magic wands or numbers that jumped out at them, by all means, please share them with myself and Blaney, who sit on the board with me, Star, and the rest of the L E C board, because can we scratch our heads over this as well?
Well, enough, like I have cut approximately three hundred thousand dollars out.
To get here.
To get here.
And it's all repairs?
Yeah.
So what the cities say last week?
They said I'm coming to a meeting next week because we're meeting as of morning tomorrow.
Did they say something about forty thousand dollars?
They want it to be five percent, no higher than five percent.
And you're currently at nine percent, nine point three six for the city?
So we already cut three hundred thousand dollars in repairs?
Yeah.
And you got this, you got this city in there already, so two forty-six? Six forty? Over half a million dollars in repairs?
Yeah, there was a hundred and eighty thousand dollar portion out of repair. And there was a cut. The original maintenance budget was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And we cut that to seventy-five. There was a ten thousand dollar vehicle, we got rid of a vehicle. There's been some cuts in the uniform expense and we cut down the cost of the laundry remodel.
So just, let's take the laundry room remodel to start with. So you cut that back, so what did you cut out? Right, so you had, so here, you had your project.
Yep. They probably think they could do it for less. They didn't tell me specifically what they could do for less.
So you're still getting all projects, they just come with your sixteen million on your question?
Yes. Yes. Instead of six thousand, it's now five thousand.
So it needs repairs, even the ones you cut, both our factories go.
I know that last year, the parking lot was on for seventy-five thousand dollars. But that was cut last year. The phone system, we've been asking for for at least two or three years.
Has there been a, a request for proposal on the phone system?
No, well, so we asked Dale if they did phone systems and he turned us away, so we have the phone system.
Yeah. And did they provide any place for?
They did provide us a quote, yep. And our maintenance men and Jim are doing all the wiring for it so that that saved less money, so we're just paying for it, the phone system.
We have talked to our representative, trying to figure something out. She's been with Kathy, she's been there and so has Julie. We took them through the jail along with individuals that came up talking about how you build a jail and maybe more tissue. Where are we gonna draw the line? We don't have an answer, I mean, it's, you sat in the one meeting, it's overwhelming. With crime rate growing as fast as it is, I don't know how you cut, I don't know how you would cut to meet the state standards.
Right.
You know? Yeah, if you didn't have to meet all the state standards, you probably would have cut a lot of places. How? I mean, if they come in and they non-compliance us, they were really, you know, hurting. You know, that happened to us, you know? And that put us in the red for a while and now we're in the black. Again, we definitely don't want to go down that road.
Right.
Jeff and I had talked about how much do you cut off of repairs just the other compliance?
Well, and still maintaining the building. To the standards that needs to be kept. You know, and that's the difficult thing is, is that it's a fifty-year-old facility that's been used twenty-four seven through sixty-five and by people who don't wanna be there.
We have trouble selling it to the city, how are we gonna sell it to the public?
So it's, what we were told by the people that came in at our last meeting and the consultants said you can figure out the life of a jail, you know, for every year that it's operating, figure three years. So if it's fifty years old, you figure it's, you know, in reality, it's about a hundred and fifty-year-old and jail years, kind of like dog life or what have you, but.
They're taking it off because we're open twenty-four seven to divide that. Most businesses are open for eight hours a day. I mean, if you could imagine, we were open here twenty-four seven. Put that extra life against this facility.
And just the overall technology about a jail correction facility in nineteen seventy-four, they had no idea what was to come. You know, with the technologies that's available now. And we've made those really good enhancements over the years with the security facilities and the electronic locks and everything else. Everything else came with an expense and and then, you know, back in nineteen seventy-four, that was the design or the concept for prison facility was that type of facility. But now they've learned that there's more efficient ways of operating them and.
And there's things that are a loss, like nine-one-ones. You do not pay money on nine-one-ones, you lose money. We don't get enough back. And that's been a huge discussion with representatives, how can you force us with nine-one-one, which is good for the public, but not even be able to come close to breaking even? And I think that's the top of why you'd like to have it go to a hundred dollars a day, because what is the fence pass? One oh five? Did something like that?
I can't.
Some number, some number in there, we're going over the number.
Well, and I reached out to eight different jails and they are, four are the eight are at a hundred dollars a day or above. The rest are looking at going, so.
So with the employees, you said you wanted four, but you're asking for two.
Yeah.
Two is the minimum, obviously to keep.
That would, that would be five people on the war in the jail.
In the state wars, what was the state like?
The state always asks us why we only have four, so.
So the two people will get you to the five or the four people will get you to the five?
The two people will get us to the five.
And the, and the other two obviously would be for, say, when they're on vacation and just having enough backup.
Just having enough backup or to run recs or to run courts or.
The biggest thing if the public's watching today is we need their help to keep the crime down so we're not in this situation. We need to all be looking out for each other. It's there. I've looked at these numbers many times, I don't, I don't know how we keep going up. You know? You gotta have a facility, sure don't wanna have the crime worse than it is now already. Crazy number, when you look at the numbers, five or six, or don't mean it. It's nuts.
Yep. So I don't know what to, what we can possibly cut without redoing, without hampering or hurting the, the safety of the facility. You know, that, that's the, the big thing that we wanna maintain is is the safety and integrity of the correctional officers, the staff, and the people that we're entrusted to care for.
Right. When they, when the individuals came out, they talked about new jails, the biggest thing was efficiency can drive costs down, but it's the initial cost of putting the facility up.
Right.
You know, but as far as operating the facility, I think the numbers were, if I remember right, were quite low. Because you know, you're not going to help get meals on the economy, that's all. Facility and things like that. How do you, how do we come up with, you know, the money for the facility to get more efficient? Or like she said, you gotta keep a piece of this place together and hopefully one day it'll add up, I don't know.
Well, hopefully that we can maintain a CEO of staff back there that's properly trained and we can possibly increase some of those numbers so we can get some outside contract help. You know, that, that's what's really hurt is, you know, if you look at our contract, we, our contract inmates, you know, from the federal side of things and other entities outside our area, we're not getting any of those because we, we don't have the capacity right now to accept anymore outside our area.
If we have that staff, you could probably bring this number down three, four hundred dollars. But you gotta have the staff to do that, to get the numbers. If you can't have higher numbers because you don't have the staff, no more income coming in to do that. It's a cap at eighty right now.
It'd have to be, and we've been staying at that sixty-five. You know, and we're very reluctant to go beyond sixty-five or seventy, I guess, you know, to stay, you know, and give yourself a buffer in case you have a busy weekend. Something like that, whether or not you violate it for an hour or three days, it's still a a capacity concern for the state and.
So you met with Benson, you, you met with Benson today, you said?
Was that Benson?
And what were they, what were they saying about it? Were they obviously unsure their eyes are?
Yes, they're, they're, they're in this realm of, it costs so much money, how can we save money? I don't know how we can save money.
Well, at some point when you're providing the service, you can't save money.
Right.
I don't care if it's roads, cops, jail, library. The cost of everything went up so much.
Right.
Obviously, you're gonna get a number change.
Right.
You're getting our whole house. But if you're gonna, if you wanna set, let's just say you set the bar here, which the D O C does, and provide that service, whether the stuff is funded or unfunded mandates or whatever. Providing a service, I mean, breaking even is even almost out of the realm of possibility because that's not the nature of providing a service. And I, you know, you're right. So if it's twenty-five? Well, actually, it would be thirty-five. If you're trying to keep it at seventy, so thirty-five inmates is, is, that is, that's a huge deal, obviously.
Well, that.
Because that's to outside people that you can.
Yeah.
Right. And then we talk about going from eighty to a hundred. That comes back on us anyway, right?
It does, though.
In the latter, all you look at is prosecution. Incarceration. If it was your time, it would have altered it. Wouldn't be the great part.
Well, we'll take a closer look at this tomorrow at the L E C meeting.
And see what we can do.
And I, I don't know, you get the other county's inputs on what their thoughts are and.
What we need one.
Right. And then if we need you to come back in, we have, we may come back in the first of August for meeting then. Is that?
Is that where you can watch the board is recommending and.
Or did you want a special meeting? Do you have a date and time? No?
We'll figure it out.
We'll, we'll set that maybe later. So we'll have two weeks in between today and, and our next regularly scheduled meeting. Hopefully, we can all come together and, and for a special meeting and bring people back or, or additional departments that we haven't heard from today, so.
So I do have Chelsea with me also from Community Service. You should have gotten her a letter, I'll let her talk about that.
Chelsea, welcome.
Thank you.
You're right, her.
Well, the Community Service Program is asking for a contribution of ten thousand dollars in half this year, it was in the last year as well. That ten thousand dollars is used for essentially program costs and expenses. The Community Service Program does oversee twenty-four seven program, Community Service G P S. And that twenty-four seven program is doorway testing, drug patches, screen, alcohol monitor, or seven-seven face-to-bread testing. The only two programs that's in there that bring any profit in for the Community Service Program would be the drug patches and the G P S monitors. Those monies that are running are not enough to keep the program afloat. The G P S program does keep people out of the jail, so it does lower costs because it costs more to house an inmate than it does to the mom G P S.
And does the inmate pay then part of that G P S?
The inmate would pay all of that.
All of that?
Yes, they are liable for all those costs.
What happens if they don't? What happens if they don't?
If they fail to pay in non-compliance as well, the judge, the judge then came like a power to bring them in. However, it then goes to restitution costs, then you can't ever make somebody pay. So then we just leave the costs and we're negative.
How often does that happen?
Very often.
Very often.
Yeah.
So it's not a front, upfront fee that they pay?
They are required to pay three hundred dollars upfront to enable to even get it on their ankle to go to jail, but then after that.
So, uh, that three hundred dollars, that, that's a credit then for what is that?
Yes, it goes for the two weeks of the monitoring.
And ten thousand dollars that's what you received last year?
Yes.
I know this is a bad question, but how short is that?
Um, as of now, we use eight thousand dollars each month. Or more costs that were overlooked or not written in as non-compliance as in previous years that have to be recouped from that money as well. Just to bring it back to you then.
You've used eight thousand in six months?
Yes, yes. We are working with the court system to try and do order show cause terms, personally offenders warrants have been issued for a few. Some cases that have been closed, they cannot reopen and do that for, and then we also have individuals that were, have passed away or are mentally incapacitated. But we'll never recoup those funds, so.
So by cases used that are closed. How is that?
So that would work is if they were on an unsupervised probation or supervised probation, technically the case hasn't finalized, but they have appeared to reopen it if there's any violations or discrepancies. If they're on an unsupervised probation or supervised probation, they can't just reopen a case if they're on case fees. So they just walk, they walk away.
We didn't say that here. It's not public knowledge. But they probably know. Okay. Anything else for Chelsea?
You gotta ask one more question, just put it right up in my head. So the case is closed, but they have X amount of things they have to do yet.
Right, so if they have.
To, to clean their record up, totally.
Yes, so essentially unsupervised and supervised probation, if it's say they are on three hundred and sixty days of supervised probation, they have three hundred and sixty days to pay all of their restitution fees or quit that case, and if they don't do it, then it can be an order to show cause hearing. However, some of those costs aren't reported, like some of them weren't on some of these cases, they're just completely, they can't reopen the case for it.
So that's why they're careful, hopefully they're hard with that.
Yeah. Generally, I do get asked just early restitution, I refuse if they haven't paid sometimes. That question's not asked and I don't always know if they want to report on it, because I will make one on Monday.
Why are you waiting, man?
Thank you. Appreciate you. Mr. Barth, how are you?
I'm depressed. For you guys. Thank you. Uh, you all should have, uh, quick questions in front. Good news is, I'm asking for less money. I don't know if to cover what I just heard, I apologize for that. But, uh, the, the costs, most of the costs that you cannot recall, it consists of, as you can see, their, uh, payroll and health insurance. Why am I asking for this money? I'm on Medicare. I'm on Medicare, if I say. So, uh, probably I have the expensive coverage that I have in the corner, I'll have to cross and I'm, uh, what's, what's the, uh, bluegrass blue seal for my supplement as well, so what's that? I wanna talk about some of the things that we're trying to work on and where we're at there. The budget really has not changed in five years, but I've stayed able to help too bad by cutting where I can cut. One, one jumped out at the city, and that's the liability vehicle charts and others. We didn't have coverage on some of the property that we have, the industrial park, it had a hundred thirty acres, so. Like, coverage for that from a liability standpoint, uh, we pushed our insurance on some, but that's where we're at, so, uh. How many of you all have heard about Encore Three, a lot of the theater? When I first got here, it was still a stayaway from theaters, don't do anything that way, and then over time, it's like, what are you gonna do, when are you gonna get a theater? Uh, five people stepped up, you guys know, you know, so I mean, I'm sure you know some of them that have worked with being bitter and others market tell us, and they're, they're out and running. We're helping out, when I say we forward, that was like in our growth fund, hundred dollars to get through the city. We're helping out to the two, two hundred thousand dollars, if that's in the newspaper, but we're helping the theater. They, they bought the theater, but we're helping with outfitting and getting it there. It's gonna be a forgivable grant, or a loan, I should say, no interest, no payment. If they can get to ten years, they all, we're, 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 we said you gotta get two years on your own. And then at the end of the second year, we're gonna give them back twenty-five thousand dollars a year for a year period to get them to two hundred thousand, to encourage them to stay in town. So that's kind of an innovative thing, I'm involved in a lot of this type of things and, uh, you know, technology about, so you probably see more of that. Kojak, I don't know if you realize this, Kojak, it's not at about a million dollars a month itself. You know, flux, the choice fluctuates between thirty and forty, depending on where they're at, what the projects are, but they're at that point right now. I wish we had another building, you know, buildings are the key, you can't build anything now for the price, I mean, you're, you're just heard that there. I don't know what I knew, a lot of forcemen set up a cost for a bunch, but, uh, I wish we had a fifty thousand square foot building, I think you could get a couple, nothing's into it. The problem is where are they gonna get the employees, right? Uh, that's the challenge everywhere. And, uh, I'll talk a little bit about that in a second, but, uh, I've got a Canadian firm that, that's, that's toured twice now, leaving town. That just the cost of building the facility that they would need at the industrial park is just, be right across from you. I mean, I think that, that area that's there, they fill it up, uh, it'd be great labor, but it'd also be a competitor for workers, you know, I mean, that's a challenge as well, so. So I've been doing a lot with the Charm Group, you know, with that initial stamp of society, human resource and, uh, managers? We've got about eight, ten of them, you know, I'm at Iron High, leading edge, Summers, Kojak, CHI, all two high planes, uh, for NTC. City, Tommy worked there for HR, you don't really have any HR directly, do you? Yeah, the city does, I guess, that's right. Uh, from an HR standpoint, from, I've worked with them, we're do, we're doing a lot, I say me, myself, and the businesses that are sponsoring these employees. Are sponsoring young kids that are graduating and trying to get them into careers that are in our area. And, uh, they gotta live and work here for three years, but the state's got a program work for them, so they matches, gives six thousand dollar donation. And that's how it works with the state, the state matches, that's twelve thousand dollars in scholarship. And then I make the bank, the institution or business chime in too, you know, participate. So at the end, it's, it's over twenty thousand dollars a scholarship for a two-year program. Lakes Marines have three auto, uh, auto mechanics, uh.
Marine mechanic.
Marine gap, uh, leading edge diesel mechanics, you know, those type of companies, so these companies are, I'm talking about healthcare. Even teachers, you know, we're just short on teachers, I don't know what they're gonna do this coming school year, but where they're at. A lot of retiring, so we're trying to get those people in those positions, uh, in those type of things, so. We're kinda triaging, who do we need in our area, because we need lots, right? I mean, if I came to you, Kenny, and said, who do you need because of retirement in the immediate year, you know, you could probably give me a couple of names, well. Professional, we can do weld repayment, uh, scholarship is more of the technical two-year type program. So if you said you needed a welder, we could work on trying to get you a welder. Matter of fact, Summers called me, they need some welders, and there's a school on Fargo that, the program works for about fifteen grand, I don't know, it's probably a one-year program. And they, they get that type of thing, so we're trying to keep kids local. Problem is, we should have did that in nineteen eighty. Because the, the schools that are feeding us, there's no one there. You know, that's the challenge that I see, and that's, that's the interesting part for me, is how do we do that? Uh, but those are some of the things we're working on. We got a million dollars of federal dollars that, I'm just kidding, it's stupid, they just gave it to you last season. I've talked to pretty much, I think, all of you, some commissioner, I don't think I've actually talked in front of the group. If there's an extra, that's fine, I don't, I can, I can go through it. It's, this, this is a project here that we're, we're, we're gonna have about four hundred grand in federal dollars in. And this is basically a mobile career exploration classroom. That's a long word to say, a VAM that's got electronics in it, that we can go to Lee, uh, uh, Munich, we can go to Can Do, we can go to Starkweather within our region. And we're gonna talk to kids about their careers, and I say we, uh, it's a, it's a six county regional type thing through Sandy Shidley, North Central County. That we have the dollars to be able to do this, it's a VAM company out of Fargo. Uh, any of you know Ben Gleason? Ben's the owner of that VAM company, it's VAM to VAM, so they're converting that VAM. And we're also selling sponsorships. Tommy, you guys funded this, if you remember, Commissioner Frith, I know you were on that, that commission. Mr. Volk, I don't know, you, you're a part of this, so this county logos, I don't know about logos, but county names will be on, and city. And it'll be an Aspire-like vehicle, it's all set down with the logos of the company, so we'll go out and we'll talk about the diesel technician, we'll talk about an auto mechanic.
I really thought I'd try to shoot this off.
And it's supposed to be any day. We've had a few issues, we had an ACH transaction that was hijacked, and that we lost thirty-seven thousand dollars, and I say we were sent it. We're trying to get it back through insurance. Thirty-seven thousand. Uh, Commissioner, it's got the undercarriage accessibility feature.
Nice.
You don't see on this, this demonstration, or not demonstration, mob, that, what am I trying to say, logo here, basically. But the vehicle is, that's pretty much the vehicle from pictures that I've taken. Any, uh, comments or questions, I mean, I continue to look forward, I'm gonna end with, one of the reasons you see the lower request for me is I don't need any insurance because I'm sixty-five. I'm trying to find that next person to command from state level. I'm the economic president for the Economic Development Association, I want to go for the next two years. I committed to that organization and to the city that I'm gonna stick around for two years, but I gotta find somebody to replace me. That's easier said than done, isn't it? I know that for a fact, it just, it's hard to fill out the types of roles like this, this isn't just some type of role that someone out of college jumps into, you know? We got a young city administrator over there that I think's doing a good job for you guys, even though they're part of the county. And, uh, if we can find someone now, I think that would be, it would be a great thing, so we're gonna work on that. And hopefully we can, you know, modify the wishes we go forward. And I'm gonna do a lot of this in this coming next two years, to, you know, grow it, working with this vehicle, and being what they call a job push. We've also got, as part of this, the sponsors get these virtual reality videos, that three sixty videos that show the, the experience. So the kid can understand what that job is. And then finally, it's, I was saying, kids, the graduating youth is who we gotta get in our region, but we also have to talk to, you know, underemployed. We're gonna work with them, we've been out to suit manufacturing, talked to them, they're a sponsor, suit manufacturing sponsoring, because they've got some of the same challenges, obviously, they just can't. But yeah, we've got a lot of them, we employ people on that reservation, but it helps some of these companies, if we can get them in the right program. But that was my quick update and quick approach. Uh, one last thing is we've, we've used about four hundred thousand childcare dollars and childcare, our federal dollars, federal dollars, that went into the King's Castle, does that mean anything to any of you?
Well, childcare facility at McJohns.
At McJohns.
Felix.
You said McJohns, that goes back to like the eighties, that's what I remember, when I first started coming up here, to go to Munich to see my girlfriend, and it's was McJohns, that building. That's gonna be a childcare center, a child preschool, and here, it's dropped too, people are pretty excited about it, uh, it was, I don't know, people. Sooner rather than later, it should have been open by now, but they've had some challenges with trying to get contracts to work. Leelier, Rebecca and Leelier from Rookie, own that building, remember what's around it. Uh, the other building that, uh, in the joyful beginnings, uh, they got some dollars, so about four hundred thousand of these federal dollars went to four or five childcare centers in our region. And whereas the region's a six county region, the Devil's Lake and Ramsey County got all the dollars, so. I think that's important to hear, that, that North Central County, the regional dollars that we got through the Harvard dollars. Both of these programs are programs that, you know, took the, I think it was a million bucks total, and about eight hundred thousand really is good support us, so. So a bit of dollars, good things, it's, uh, Doug Arling said, I remember back in the eighties, we had a bus to round up students. We've gone back to that, I mean, that's really, it's not a bus now, it's a cool, high-tech van, it's got a Starlink dish on the top, so we can pull in the internet in a parking lot of the school and be able to show them some of the careers that we need in our region, and our region is Ramsey County and those five counties around us.
I think you can enable sell that to the parents as well, bring in the parents into that mobile, the job area.
In the five years I've been here, Commissioner, I tell you, that's what it takes, you gotta get mom or dad, or mom in a lot of cases, or dad, because they're, you know, both families. You gotta have them in and they gotta hear from a job, from someone, that these type of jobs exist. Everybody wants to be a marine biologist. If you're living in Devil's Lake, you're probably aren't gonna do that, we probably have our one that we need for the lake, right? I mean, uh, but, uh, so that's the reality that we've got from where we go forward. But other than that, for tomorrow, any questions at all?
Thank you, appreciate it, Brad. Any other questions for Mr. Barth?
And, uh, uh, I'm gonna be around if there's some of you that say, do you wanna be a sponsor, so. Uh, if you want your logo on it, I mean, I know a couple, Eric, I would be, so it'd be, it'd be nice to have. Thank you all.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes. Um, the first one is the treasures budget. Um, everything is about the same. Of course, Steve, um, will give us a breakdown of our technology, we put that in. Um, surface contracts, they have to give us our breakdown for Tyler's technology or the dock gear program. And everything is about the same, I don't know if you have any questions on that?
No, it's really similar to last year.
It is, and like I said, if we don't use it, you know, we got part-time seller, if we don't use it, it goes back in the pot. But it's there if we do need it. Um, but everything is, runs pretty good.
Anybody have any questions for Lisa on the treasures budget? I'm gonna go to the superintendent of schools.
Okay, superintendent of schools, um, is pretty much the same, except they put in a con, uh, contract. It's a new line item, um, I have talked to a gal out of Ward County. If I will know more by October, if I have a school going down, um, that's gonna start in my busy season, and I feel that I need some help. So I contracted, I've asked her already, and I just need you guys to know or to accept the ten thousand dollars that I put in. I don't know if, you know, that could just be higher than you think, but I'm putting that much in to, it covers expenses, I will be doing some of it with her. But, um, as far as, you really need to know the legal work on it, so we do it right the first time and not have to go back.
You said school going down, what do you mean by that?
Um, Edmore is looking at probably closing. Um, but we'll be working. Um, Edmore is looking at probably closing. Um, but we'll be working with over nineteen hundred parcels. Um, first of all, we have to figure out where the kids would go. The kids all go to one school. That'll be a little easier, because that's where all the the, um, school money would go. Then there's no line to draw. But, um, if two go here, two go there, ten go there, you know, whatever. Then we just have to start drawing lines. So, but until then, um, Edmore won't know until their October meeting. But I did put this line item in, which is to cover.
Makes sense.
And this Jody Johnson has done a lot of them. So she's our, wanted to go.
We talked about this before, that.
We did.
We wanted to be protected.
Yep. And I just, Edmore, and you know, Edmore might decide to be open another year, okay? Then we can just cut the ten thousand out again and see what the next year brings us. But I know that Jody does, um, she charges forty dollars an hour and mileage, which there is a lot of paperwork to this.
And it could be, like we started depending on where the line, depending on where the lines were drawn, it could be a slow draw-out process or very quick process?
Right, right. You know, if all the, um, kids decide to go to Langdon, there won't be no line.
Right.
Or will be, I mean, line, but it'll all go that way. But then, we also can get into an exchange. So if they start wanting to exchange land, you know, get up into Starkweather or the Munich area or whatever, then we gotta be prepared for that.
Could be a wait.
Could be a wait. Could go real easy and then, yeah. Just too long. And like I said, ten thousand might be over the limit, depending on how it goes, or, yeah.
So there wouldn't necessarily be a school district coming in and laying claim to a certain area of land. And, okay, if you live within this boundary, or this is a school district you're going to?
Um, well, it depends on if the kids, so the percentage of the land goes if the kids, if two go to Lakota, then you're gonna take a percentage of the land. Ten go to Cavalier or Langdon, then you take that percentage that goes that way. Then you start drawing the line. And that line may not be what people want.
Because then, or just, just like we.
That's why the Devil's Lake school district looks so squiggly.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. And of course, people are gonna look at their land and go, whoa, 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 I don't wanna pay that tax. I don't wanna pay that tax. I wanna go where it's cheaper. And of course, Edmore has a lower base. They've always had a lower base. So October will
No objections to the extra ten thousand dollars enough? No?
You had anything, sorry?
No. Good idea. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Frith?
I'm up. Where am I, fifty-three?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two? During board budget, um, our budget really stayed fairly similar. And we increased our revenue, our ask from the counties. And we increased it by ten percent across the board for everybody, based on their twenty-two, um, assessments that were received, actual. And so as the largest county and the biggest dollar amount, we get the biggest increase in Ramsey County. Um, that's something that hasn't been increased in a number of years. And board members thought it was time. And we may or may not get additional, um, revenue. Uh, the legislature passed a bill last session, and it'll come effect August first, that counties shall reside, or shall be a part of the joint board of the water basins within their counties. So, but it didn't put any type of mandate as far as assessing. But that old assessing century code still applies, that joint water boards can assess up to two mills. Um, so if we get Benson and Gillette counties who have decided to leave the joint board in the past, if they come back, um, we will happily welcome them and assess them accordingly. But that's, can't speculate on the future. So we left it the same. Increased our overall budget by what looks like about twelve thousand dollars.
I got a question, Jeff. What's the, what's the big cost in the website stuff?
That's, um, updating the website. Our website is something that's free and, um, it's, uh, we're probably gonna have to contract with a web designer, because I don't have the ability and technology to do that. And being able to to take the data that we're gathering, uh, from the various, um, reporting sites that we have, for whether it be water or stream gauges or precipitation, um, and putting that on a website that people can actually read and make sense of, um, instead of a, we put in on a spreadsheet and saying, this is what we received for rain, kinda thing. And the end-on sites that we participate in and others have a lot of data that they collect. Um, soil moisture is a big thing when it comes to the spring runoff. And they they collect a lot of data. Had we, if we have more of those, that'd be great. And I know Darrell Richardson, speaking with him, he's looking at putting, uh, three additional all-season, uh, weather, um, snow gathering, precipitation gauges on three of the the sites that we have within the basin. There's already one up at Clyde, um, which is good, because that's at the top of the basin. And I think he's looking at possibly Rala for the other one and one other one with one of the existing sites that we currently have. And that's all part of a, uh, a grant through, uh, other entities. So it wouldn't be an additional cost to us. But, um, maybe down the road in in maintenance, annual maintenance, we pay for that. We pay for the water monitoring gauges. We co-op with the USGS, those stream gauges that everybody holds up to lake levels and stream flows, uh, runs us just about twenty thousand dollars a year on an annual contract with the USGS. Um, and I didn't realize those gauges were so expensive, because we were looking at adding additional gauges in, say, the Lauten Cooley, and see what's exactly coming in on the Lauten Cooley, and coming into the Morrison Sweet Water watershed. But incredibly expensive. And then, you know, you have the additional cost of about seven, eight thousand dollars a year to maintain the thing or for O and M on it.
Silly question, with dollars from the money market economy?
Yep. So over the years, we've been able to squirrel away money and, um, have it in an account in at Bremer. And so, years back, we administered some programs through the State Water Commission. And part of that contract was for the administration of those programs, we'd get the remainder of the administration funds that were available. And so what they've done over the years was invest that back into the, to the joint board and, and save the interest and different things like that. And then put those towards a cost share for projects. Um, you know, we have four different parts of our water management plan, agriculture, economic development, recreation, and fish and wildlife. And if there's a, uh, public entity that has a need or a cost share request, whether it be a lake access or, um, I think we just helped, uh, the Toma Dam Recreation Area Pickney Shelter that got blown down a couple of years ago, we gave them money to rebuild that. Um, you know, we've co-op with, uh, the, the Bisbee Dam in years past, the Toma Cooley Dam, anything that's within the basin that fits within our water management plan. We provide generally anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars annually for cost shares on that. And that's, you know, no, um, not a lot of hooks to jump through. It's just submitting a request and getting one of those cost shares. But still, when we have shortfalls, um, that's where we, you know, because we only get, what is it, a little over a hundred and eleven, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from our county assessments. So if we spend all that money, um, then we have to make up the difference through our savings. And obviously, the big cost, like with everything else in business or county or what have you, is salaries and benefits. As the only employee, um, you know, my benefits are are high and, um, salaries aren't. But not as high as I'd like them. But, um, that's me to hear and there. And for my board to decide. Any other questions that I can answer on that? And obviously, as as time progresses and it comes down to voting on approving budgets, um, I would certainly abstain from voting on this one. I think one of the big things that we've cost shared in over the past couple of years was that, um, Lightar updating with the International Water Institute. That was a big expense that, that we helped, um, and that's that hydro conditioning that, um, you know, if you have a road crossing or a bridge crossing, and click on a couple mouse clicks, and it comes up with a watershed and gives you the grammars of how big of openings you should have. And, uh, that's been a very useful tool. And we just got an updated DEM for Devil's Lake Basin and sharing that with engineers now. So I just gave Paul a copy of that over at K L J. So be able to help you out with some of your road projects and see if we're in the right ballpark with some of our culverts or bridges before we go ahead with a complete update. Anything else? Any other questions? Let's take a five-minute recess before we start our regular meeting. We're just in time to go.
Hopefully, you can just get it done and over.
Do you know, did those get updated to Teams? So does everybody have those?
I just printed them.
Okay.
And I know this, and this one, please request the change of salt. Ask about that.
So there's a difference in the one that's on Teams?
Three tweaks. It's pretty much substantially the same. He just, uh, he found a typo in his address. And, uh, he had an issue with the written OS. So they changed it to some other language for him. But other than that, it's the same.
Lawyer, a little bit?
Little bit, you know? Legal Beagle. It hasn't started raining yet, Kevin.
Is that?
It hasn't started raining yet.
When I got in my pickup to come up here, there were sprinkles in the dust, but just sprinkles.
It looked like it was coming north.
Well, if it started to, no.
No. It was going around to the west of us and then up to the north.
Yeah, looks like we might've missed it. Looks like we might've missed it. Not the changes, but just.
That's north of us yet.
How long are we planning to stay?
Um, we're hoping for eight.
Hoping for eight. Jeff promised?
Huh?
Jeff promised?
Um, yeah, because he just looked up later. No, we're still on.
Hoping for six-thirty.
Oh, okay.
Share it with us.
Sounds like they're just gonna prove us some.
Okay.
Get us out here.
And I made it seven.
Um, so the reason I'm asking is, if you all approve this, I will make the changes and reprint official concrete, so we can just have both of you sign it.
Okay.
Six, no, second.
How'd my wife do? Was it a very compelling presentation?
Yeah. See what you got.
I use a hard app to follow that. But I do it anyway. Not afraid to try from all this?
Not yet.
Lawyer speaks next, so.
I'm in a queue to start. You guys got more important things to do than listen to me.
Sorry, I'm gonna be standing in front of your guys' face.
I forgot we had the one without the identification in it.
No.
Before.
It's on our dry. Been looking at it in a while.
It's five thirty. I'll call the media and the Ramsey County Commission to order. Please join me in pledge. Please join me in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In light of the recent tragedy in Fargo, I'd ask that everybody join me in a moment of silence for the officer Jake Bolin and the others injured. Thank you. We did compose a letter of condolence to send to the city of Fargo and the Fargo Chief of Police and their police department. And I have all our signatures on there. So I'd like a motion to go ahead and approve sending that. Right. Motion in a second to go ahead and send the letter of condolences to the city of Fargo and the Fargo Police Department. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
God bless those officers. All right, let's see. Approval of minutes, previous meeting. Motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All who was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Any additions or the agenda that has been?
I will move to approve the agenda.
Okay. We have a minute, we have a second. Motion in a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First up, Mr. Cummings.
Well, thanks for taking the time. Any else here? I believe Candy is so on top of everything that she sent out the copy of everything. Does everybody have a? End of your budget. Yes, sir. Page six. So I used the numbers that I was directed to use for salaries. So there shouldn't be any issue there. First line item is possible inquest. That's something that's required by century code. Accounting based on our size, the required amount is 1,000. So that's, that shouldn't be an issue. Next, we go down to travel expenses. As you can see, for 2023, we budgeted $1,500. That's been blown out of the water just between at a conference in Missoula and then also local interstate reimbursements and cooking and travel. Things are getting more expensive. I did request an increase to 6,000 on that line item. As you may or may not be aware, we offered our third state's attorney position to a recent U N D law graduate. She did accept. She's in the process of getting an apartment and moving here. So with the addition of her to the staff, that's what essentially the increases on my budget are. Because we have to be able to provide for her travel and also her licensing requirements and also her technology. So that's where you see an increase in travel. Technology increase by 1,000. It's the same reasoning. Another member of the staff, more computers, more licenses to have to buy legal research materials and to that nature. Office supplies, we're staying the same. We've been pretty good about renting in our office. Supplies intend to be as paper-free as we can. With lawyers, sometimes that gets a little tricky, but we do our best. Library requested 3,000, is what I had budgeted last year. You're probably, what you're probably thinking is, why does he have a library? Everything's on a computer. We use that library line item to pay for our subscriptions to, it's called LexisMx. It's basically all those old lobbies that you see on a shelf and like courtroom TV shows. We do it online. So that's the library line item. Capital outlay, 3,500. That's also required by statute. So we haven't utilized it hardly in the past several years. However, that's what we're required to ask for in case there are changes to the office suite that need to be made, repairs, things of that nature. Miscellaneous dues, that's an increase of 1,000. Again, hired a new attorney, pointing out to cover her dues and licensing fees as well. Contingent fund, $1,500, required by statute. So far as I know, it's never been utilized, but it's required to be there. So I'm asking for 1,500 based on the size of our county. Cell phone charges. When I took office, I requested to get a on-call cell phone, a duty cell phone that officers could call if they had questions. It's been utilized fairly well, I would say. When I started, there were a lot more calls coming in. Now that we've got some new leadership in some new places, things are starting to level off. You know, first year, we were a little under. Second year, it looks like we're a little over, but I think we're dialed in. And so 600 should cover it for the year. And then the last line item, service costs, 904. There was a law change where juvenile court no longer does service of their paperwork. And that was shifted to the state's attorney's office. It's an unfunded mandate by the state and the juvenile will be right. You have budgeted $1,500 for the next year. I have no data on this. Juvenile cases are completely unpredictable. It can be one kid, it can be 11 kids, it can be two parents, it can be seven parents, depending on how the family is set up. Typically, the cost of service is utilized in areas where we can't use sheriff's service. So if I'm on a reservation, sometimes it's hard to find somebody because they don't have physical addresses. So we use a process server and they set them great and there's no capital they can spend. So if you look at the numbers, this year's request versus last year's request, it's a $22,000 proposed increase.
I do have a question again.
Yes, sir.
I see the proposed increase, how come only $22,000 when we hired our number?
Because we had budgeted it, oh, last year, that's right. But unfortunately, we're unable to fill that.
Yep.
Track it now.
That's right.
So that 22,000 increase, that includes the wage increases that you directed us and also the miscellaneous increases throughout the line items. Generally speaking, we have been processing and charging out somewhere in the neighborhood of 800 to 1,000 cases a year since I started. That is not how many we're reviewing. That's not how many law enforcement is dealing with. But that's how many are getting through to the criminal stage of things. As you are all probably well aware, we are very busy. I did my best to keep, yeah, most of your stuff is the travel expenses and technology. Pretty cut and dry. And, you know, as we move forward, technology is becoming more and more part of the court system. Ever. We're not, we're not asking for lots of fancy things. We're just trying to stay up for it. Does anybody have any other questions for me?
Bo, do you think you could put together in the next couple of weeks the number of case increases over the past four years?
I sure can. I can talk to the click recorder and get that data for you. I think that would help us. Other work for the country.
Well, you know, I, I think it all ties together with, you know, everything. We're looking at the big cost items, you know, the, you see the state's attorney's office and sheriff's department. Big cost for our law enforcement cases. And, you know, over the past four years, if you look back at the budget in 2021, it's $170,000 increase in your office. You know, which is really minor compared to the other entities that we're dealing with law enforcement. So.
And I'm under no delusion. I know that it's expensive. Law enforcement is an expensive line item if you look at it from the big picture. But it's my opinion that we are a public utility. We are no different than a road or a school. Everybody should have access to using it. Everybody should feel comfortable using it. And it's, it's an investment. You're not going to make money off of your law enforcement side of the house. Our job is to keep the community safe in the current process and protect people as best we can. I would also say, I know that my budget looks probably distorted on the high side. I would just remind you all that in my office, I have three people who have doctor's degrees. So that's, that's where some of that cost comes in, you know, all that education. But I think we've been doing a pretty decent job. I know everybody has strong feelings about crime rates and law enforcement in general, whether it's good or bad. But we're doing our best. We're trying to get out there. We're trying to crack down on things.
And nobody's saying that you're not.
No, no, I know. I just, I want to give some credit where credit is due. I know the police officers are really doing their best that they can. We're trying to charge them as best we can, so. Other questions about specific line items or areas of my budget that proposed?
The new additional state's attorney, she'll be on board this fall yet, right?
That is the goal.
Yep.
Case of our own next week.
Oh, wonderful.
And she will start either August 7th or August 14th. It just depends on how the department shakes out.
Sure.
Really excited to have her on board. She is young and enthusiastic and energetic. And she has a lot of prior experience working with civil law firms. So that's going to be nice to have another brain that can help me with the civil side of stuff. But primarily, she's been doing criminal stuff. And we're excited to just have some more coverage and another body to help us spread out our case load.
Great.
Well, thank you for the time. That's all I have.
Now, the real big one, Sheriff Wayne. Candy, I think, probably give you a list of some notes that I have provided to go along with my budget. I have sheriff's salary, decapment salary are the same, if you recommend it. Employee's salary, that's good. I'm asking for a little bit more and this is due to the increase of adding two positions. We like to create an investigator detective for the criminal cases that we've been handling. And another position would be civil service, warrants, transport, and court officer. Just to help alleviate the transports and dealing with the courts, taking in our civil service. Our civil service is up tremendously in the last two years. Our transports, we've been trying to use special deputies. We've been trying different things just to make this work. And bringing it a shorthand every time we turn around. Tomorrow, we're making two trips to Bismarck just to take five people to the state pen. But the state pen says, you'll have these guy here, 11. The other three will be here at 3:00. So we wind up making two trips. So I'm pulling in another deputy because the special deputies are tied up, they can't go. So just having a next to person to do the transports really take a lot of pressure off the guys that are actually supposed to be on patrol.
And do we have any special transport vehicle or are you just regular?
Right now, we're using, we got a bag we're using and we're using any squad car that's on the service right now.
Obviously, they're roadworthy and.
Yes. So and with these two positions, what I did is I only created one vehicle this year. So when the two new ones get in production and they're on the road, I'll have two other vehicles that could go to these positions. I wouldn't have to, I might put more money for vehicles for them. The other increase is we got the two that are on the drug task force. I want to move them to the investigator detective on the drug side. They've just been knocking it out of the park. Just did some number crunching with them today and we're seeing about 8,000 fentanyl pills that they have seized. And that's street value of around a half million dollars.
This year?
This year so far. So they've been putting in a lot of work. They wouldn't got a lot of specialty training. They're, they're the best at their job right now. So I'm asking for their step increase, 4% plus an additional 500. And their wages, and they get them really comparable to what the drug task force.
Is that a multi-county, county task force, correct?
That's right.
Yeah. And we get additional funding from the other counties?
Yes. So the special deputy is going to stay the same. The drug task force that we pay into, that'll stay the same. Overtime is not going to change. The insurance, we upped that a little bit due to the fact that it looks like we're going to be short this on what we estimated, just for home vehicles. The drug task force has reached out and asked if I would cover the insurance on the vehicles that the deputies are driving for the task force. And this is going to be due to the fact that they add some drug tests. That's, this is one area where they wouldn't have the money to cover. So I told them I'd put it in my budget to see if I could get it approved. The rent, same, travel same. Good change there. We have the technology that we added, which was provided by Steve. And then we're asking for 25,000 there. And a lot of that has to do with us going to the CAG system. We're going to be running DVNs. Plus these new computers that we got to run these CAGs within our patrol cars. We've got a maintenance agreement. And we're going to get the 365 Pro so they can write their reports of stuff in their squad cars when they're out patrolling or sitting on, somewhere they can be working within their car too. And I also got a note to start the replacing some of the computers. I put in for two computers based on the fact that if we get two new positions, if we don't get them, drug task force could certainly use the CAG system. With the CAG system, they'll be able to input all their drug intel, which would be readily available to all the road guys at your fingertips. The radios, I left at 82,000. I know we purchased a couple of them. Prices are still going up. Prices are still going up. I know we got a bunch more to order. I think we're just going to keep getting them as we replace the vehicles. Office supplies to stay the same. The one that's kind of got the big increase is going to be the equipment and supplies. This, this can do, we have equipment to process. They got some bags, um, but they don't got nothing for casting for prints. We do have one fingerprint kit that's probably, uh, it's way older than I am. This stuff in it is outdated, no good. So just to get us caught up, they have, they have no cameras. They use their cell phones to take crime scene pictures, which is something we really don't want because the defense asks for the phone because it took the picture, then we're out the phone. It's just, you might have made a comment to somebody in a text and you didn't want out, you know, there, your kid's out, so. So we need some cameras. Uh, I also got in there, we're going to start the cycle of replacing to the vest, the body armors. And it's just a lot of the equipment that we say that we're going to provide, but we haven't provided in years. Duty belts and flashlights. When I started doing an inventory, a lot of the guys are telling me, this is mine, this is mine, this is mine. I bought it because we need it or we don't have it. So this is going to get us caught, caught back up. We got some old light bars that need to be replaced. And then I talked to you earlier about getting new tasers. And I got the 6,769 for the lease for the next five years. So moving on to the uniforms. Uh, price of uniforms and everything's gone up just like everything else. So we just bumped it up a little bit with some of the new hires and stuff that have been acquired here. Uh, vehicle expense went up a little bit. This is another, I don't want to deal with the task force. You're not going to have the money to cover their fuel for the task force vehicles that the two deputies are utilizing. So I added that into my budget. I think it was right around 3,000. So capital outlay, uh, we've been budgeting for two vehicles, but we're kind of odd number of vehicles. This would be the year that we would ask for three. We went with about $50,000 a vehicle. Uh, when we got the two new Durangos, we estimated them at 45 and then they came in 5,000 hires. And we were actually over budget when we purchased the vehicles last year. Then miscellaneous, uh, we moved up to 45,000. And a lot of that has to do with, uh, the increase in the cell phone and the Wi-Fi's that we had to put in squad cars to use. To use them to make our CAD system work. And that was right around just about 13,000 to increase us.
So, excuse me, Sheriff, if you have 35,000, is that supposed to be 45?
We changed.
Oh.
Changed a little.
Yeah, we.
Just question today.
We got our first bill and it was a little bit more than what was anticipated.
It's 340.
Yes. So it kind of put me in the scrambling one.
So then the technology went up 5,000 also. You have 20 on here, you said 25?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought you were just misreading them.
No, it was, it was scramble one here. So, but just to give you an idea of where we're at, in 2008, we only had 1,723 calls for service. As of right now, we're, today, uh, when I left, we were at 3,500. Uh, we're on pace to be 7,000, a little over 7,000, which would put us a thousand higher than last year even.
Where, where are you at now?
3,500.
3,500?
In 2008, you were how much?
1,723 for the whole year, for the whole year. That's calls for service. And right now, we're at 3,500 calls for service. We had, last year was 6,033.
I wonder yourself.
And I tell you what, the guys are doing a good job. I mean, we, we got our schedule now. We're actually, we got somebody out 24/7. So we always got somebody out. We're running two to a shift. So like these transports, you know, I get, I get a deputy tied up in court. These are two, three hours. I need one guy to respond to things. And if he gets tied up with something or something else ends up, normally I go, but it's just, uh, having some extra help would go a long ways. The, the investigations, um, these guys will hook a case right at the end of their last day that they're working, they're off for two, three days. And the combat, they're on nights, it's just tough to do. Then you're trying to hand it off to somebody else and things get missed. It takes, it's taking longer to do cases than it should be. And we want to start doing better cases and getting them done in a timely manner. And we got one guy right now, I think, would be a perfect fit. He's got the training. He's worked with me on the drug task force and he picks things up real quick. And, and I think between him and I, we can groom the rest and make, and, uh, these investigations go a little bit quicker, but we just, we just need the extra guys to do it. So I'm open for any questions?
Uh, in, in light of national and state news and the number of fentanyl pills that you have taken off the street so far this year, um, it's really tough to argue with any amount you throw in front of us. So appreciate all, everything that you guys do for us.
So what happens to that? Yeah. They just get destroyed. They destroy, they cry to a secure area and then destroy. Burn it in the city right here.
Look, put them back on the street for fun to share.
No, I'm just asking. The only question of where they go and you know what happens. They're off the street forever. They're gone. That's, that's good.
Well, I guess just to add in a little bit what Brian said, you know, some of the criticism of the sheriff's department in the past. Then, you know, we never see these guys. If you got one serving paper and one on transport during shift in the middle of the afternoon, you're not going to see them. You're, you know, if you got one investigating something, you got one doing the transport and they have to do civil, you know, there again, you don't.
You can't get the crime off the street fast enough.
Well, and, and it's not, you know, visibility is a deterrent also. I mean.
And these two extra can out post shifts. So we got vacation and stuff too. You know, if they need help with investigations, guys who are working, well, come on to. And so we're just trying to build a really good team and we've came a long ways, but we got a long ways to go.
Yeah, it's just like the LEC, you don't have enough people to work and you got people not getting vacations, days off. That's not a good work environment and that's just as important as the money.
Not having the time off to cast your employees.
Absolutely.
Anything else, Sheriff?
That's all I got. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin.
All right. Do you want to start with the budget or through the agenda?
Well, you want to go through the, your agenda first, that probably.
Okay. What's the projects we are going right now? Our TPC project has been completed and lines are all painted. Uh, the construction signs are down. So that one is off the list for this year. I talked to the contractors for the paper patches and they have a plan to start doing them at the end of July, last week, July, so. That's looking forward. I think the paper batches we're doing this year are just south of Orville. Get south of an Orville mixed up, but it's Orville. We're doing some paper batch just south of there. Uh, there's works on the culverts that we're doing ourselves. They got the one done in patcher township. Well, they finished it up today. They were doing the cleanup work and rip rap work and stuff like that today. So moved all the equipment, starting on the second one. There's actually three bridges that were taken out and then we have a bunch of culverts that we got to work on too. High water, we did get all that put down. So that project is pretty much done too. So any questions on those? Four things we got going on now. I've been trying to get all the, call a gravel contractor and I have a bill to get it over the forum yet, so. Not sure when I got to start grabbing for it. Should be some. Oh, you got anything you want to add on projects?
Um, I'm looking for county four, about this culvert up by, um, Edmar will be later this summer, probably September. I think is when we have it. Scheduled a, the pre-job for that yet, so.
How long to do that?
I'd say a month. It's, it's, it's got an October completion date or somewhere in October, I don't remember. How long back in the week closes, I don't know. Probably that full three weeks or so and then after you, once they have it solid and backfilled, I would, I would already have it. So we, I would say close to a month, which is not the ideal timing.
What, what's the?
I'm just asking a question so that we need to get that put out to the public so that the detours and all that stuff comes up.
Yeah, in public, the farmers can plan because of their, I'm sure it's used a lot.
Yeah, for sure.
And there are roads, you know, we decided that mileways, so it's not too bad.
Just so there's a plan, you know, so.
We didn't sign a detour, you know, to direct traffic in any direction. But, uh, I'm sure lawyer will.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And once I get the schedule from contractors, in more detail, I'll share that.
What will list be you guys' personal home and cell phone numbers?
I'll carry the ones, so.
Harvest and roads closed, okay.
But it should be a permanent fix ultimately.
Yeah, yeah, most of that's.
Seven years?
Seventy, a hundred years, I mean theoretically.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, wait until that one. And then the county three overlaid it. We've got a plan to mostly get it for the overlay part. I drove through it the other day and noticed that the guardrail on the bridge up that way has been hit a bunch for at least a couple times and these repairs, so we're probably going to include that in the project as well for next year.
We took a look at most of the culverts off there. I would have thought maybe it really needs to be, jump all that out, it needs to be replaced.
Yeah, just two concrete ones that look a little bit of a dip, the patch over the top of them. I mean, they're not separated. They're both concrete, 36-inch culverts, so that one's separated and it seems to be holding together. I guess it could all change unless there's capacity issues.
Kevin, as that road or that project gets a little closer, can we make sure that those detour roads are, the roads that people will be using are in good shape? You know, if we need to do an extra.
The grid?
Yeah, the grid, the, the MZ carpet.
Yeah, we'll play them once you need them to, if they're on track.
Anything else?
Um, I, we're going to be working on the hydrology for the crossing 28 that will brought the water work. Use that, that sheriff might have to.
Well, hopefully that helps out.
Yeah.
With that.
Yeah, those are ahead. All right, moving on then. One of our new dams, uh, the oil cooler line started, uh, it's not actually leaking, it's leaking, but. So we ended up taking it to the NAP to get it fixed. And we did get a bill and it's only like, it was a thousand dollars. A thousand and sixty-two dollars and 29 cents. So we did, did meet the 2500 dollar threshold there. But just here, out there. And, uh, we got the money for our season-wide stormwater grant. Uh, the whole county got 122, just over 122,000. County, of that, the county got 53,000, about 700, and the rest went to the townships.
Any questions on that?
That's in addition to.
The original stormwater.
That's a, that's a good term.
Yeah, it is. I mean, of course, everybody has its expenses too, but yes, hell, you know. And one thing I didn't have on there is, uh, our stark weather operator is, uh, leaving us, so. I don't know if you've seen the ads for the new employee, but we're advertising for a new employee for a stark weather machine. I guess Brian, Brian is gone, so I don't know how many applications we actually have, but I think we are getting some applications in.
They must do some training with those guys once they're hired.
We do a couple of days of just with one of our workers. And then every so often, the state puts on a training session. Ryan went to that also with Alex. Did not, or what he did. So one thing we need to keep in mind here is two years from now, we got three, three blade operators that are going to be retired. So we're going to be in that same boat again in three years. It's on our home. With such a thing that we want to keep, trying to look for blade operators or. In past, we have talked about, uh, not doing township roads anymore, just throwing that out there. But now we got six water graders and I think we, we, we'd have to keep three of those just to do the county system, but. Just something to think about within the next two years. We're going to really have to look for operators.
Well, if, if we can't find operators now, that's a concern.
Right, exactly. That's why I'm throwing that out there now for something to think about.
And I had talked to Kevin earlier. Not only the county people, but some of the townships. They need to lay off the pressure of these blade operators. I've heard it several times. Lee, you've heard it. If they're contacting these guys, they're contacting us and they're putting a lot of pressure on these guys. It's going to, if these retired guys leave and the other generation comes in, they're probably not going to stay around. They're not going to probably take the pressure of the old guys that they've been around for a while and goes in one year, out the other. I mean, if there's no rain, how much good can you do to the roads? You know, you can blade all day.
You can blade all day long and you're gonna put powder back on the road. Is it necessarily gonna make the road perfect? No. We all know that. You know, without rain, you can't probably do a really good job. And I think they're getting some pressure and we could use some rain and when we do get rain, we can't get onto every road either. Just so the public knows it's. Well, if there's gonna be jobs open, apply and see if they can do a better job.
Do, maybe you had something we can talk to Brad Barth about, you having that mobile? And, you know, job fair.
Well, I was just thinking about the sending him off to school to learn how to mow. That where you pay part of their tuition.
You know, start, start in high school and, you know.
The other thing was as far as criticizing the blade operator or whatever. If the only time they see a guy, well, he's chewing his ass. You know, you're not establishing a relationship there to try and understand that person or what their job is. You know, like. I don't want people to say, well, I would tell them it's not to talk to the blade man, well, that's not what we're saying. We're saying build a rapport with that person so you can talk. If, I mean, if you do have an actual criticism. Then it comes off as a suggestion. It's not coming off as, you know. If you're just gonna chew somebody down, they throw Kevin under the bus, but that's what he gets paid for. Part of the reason he gets paid for, probably not the reason, but they go there because you're, you're the department head. But, you know, go back to this kid, Stark weather, got his ass chewed forty-five minutes and then.
Ran into the door.
Ran into the door because he was so flustered and didn't have time to learn the job, didn't have time to do anything. You can't bend your arm at the elbow and spin in a circle, kind of, that's how big the world is. I mean, seriously, I mean, that's. There's, there's other things in life besides getting your ass chewed by somebody who thinks they know the job. And I'm not saying the average guy doesn't know the job or know what a good road is. We all know what a good road is. But to understand, uh, you know, what makes up the gravel and why it does get washed away is not just because of blade operator. Blade operator not doing a good job, if it goes back to the moisture in the binder and, you know, take a few minutes and understand that. If it was cost effective, put more binder in the gravel, we'd be doing it, you know, I mean. Yeah, it's, it's, it's authority on everybody's side, usually driving a road every day, but on the other hand, um.
And we're watching the maintainer go up and down the road. It, it appears to be an easy job, but it's, it's way more complex than, than what it appears. And give the guys some credit where, where credit is due, and I think they do a, a good job, but. Uh, you know, I've driven county roads in other counties and, um. Yeah, hate to brag, but we have very good roads within our county, the townships and counties.
And I don't think a lot of, I mean, the county roads obviously come first, but I, I don't think a lot of people realize. If a township only hires the county three times, it's not Kevin's fault. They need to also talk to their township representatives and get it six times if it needs six times. You know, your hounds are tied. We're not gonna go out there six times and charge the township who only hired us for three. You know, those township individuals need to make that decision. If they need to up it more well. And. The public needs to know, and it's not just the county lighting, lighting roads, just the blade roads. They're also directed by the township individuals.
So, getting a little sideways off topic, but continue.
That's all I, my agenda, that somebody cuts up.
So since we have a couple township officers in here for this DOT, um, solicitation for comments, gonna be jumped down to that then just before we move into your budget? Okay? So Gavin and Tom Mertens are, Gavin Frith, Tom Mertens are here from South Pinnock Township. Obviously here to talk about the Highway Two solicitation for comments.
Yeah, uh, after our conversation this morning. We were never, ever contacted or anything by the state dating clear back to last fall. When we. Sent in letters of concern about installation J-turns on the, on the corridor. And, uh, when that finally. Got dismissed and taken out of the project. Last April, I was here for this board and, uh. Gave you all the copy of the letter that we were sending to the state. And we sent it to all of our senators and representatives and all the pertinent people within the. This DOT concerning our concerns over the safety of that corridor and the request to. Install some more turn lanes, improve some turn lanes, uh, delete unnecessary approaches onto the highway. All in the idea that. The cost savings over the installation of a bunch of J-turns would be. Minimal for what they would be spending in, in addition to just an overlay on the road. And I have never heard back from them, what their plan is and/or. Anything, uh, soliciting news of, of, uh, what should happen up there. We had originally sent them a. A petition on the J-turns and the, this petition had over two hundred names on it and it was all. Gathered from five locations out in the, in that corridor. And all people that use that corridor or live in that corridor or. Or use it for business. The problem is that it has had this rapid development of commercial enterprise out there. And we're seeing a large, large increase in commercial vehicle use. Um, trucks, uh, cars, um, special equipment vehicles. Uh, we just have a cement company just, uh, start their construction this spring, so. You're going to see a, a year round, uh, ready mix plant operating out there. And it's getting worse instead of better, and I think that we need to do something. To address the safety of that corridor rather than just let it go. I don't know what the answer is, but, uh, with the amount of traffic that goes through there, I, I just think that. Addressing the, the. The turn lanes that we have, um, improving them, adding a few would be the best thing that could ever happen. And I would hate to see an overlay done without these additional. Concerns of being addressed. And I know that the board here is concerned about it and. If you do decide to send a letter to the North Dakota DOT expressing their concerns, if I could please get. The addresses to where they went and the township will send another letter of concern. To the same people. But I would encourage you to, uh, address your concerns as well as ours. To the North Dakota DOT before that deadline comes up.
So we have a, a letter, I don't know if it's in teams. I think we've added two that, um, included that Sarah. Um, can't remember her name that you sent me, Helen, um, part of the planning, uh. Portion of that DOT and, uh, included Ron Hankey, uh, the director of the DOT. Um, just so it goes all the way up to the top, so it doesn't stop at some mid-level and, uh, individual and. A, as well as that Chris Maples, that consulting, uh, project engineer. And I made the changes on my computer, but I didn't include them on the team, so I'll get those, uh, updated and send to everybody, but. The, the body of the letter doesn't change a lot, but the people that we've included on the CC list.
Was that one with Chris Maple?
Yep. Because, yeah, we, we have no opposition to a mill and overlay, but we wanna see some enhancements to the safety concerns. That have been addressed for a number of years out there and, uh, including the, the extension of the left-hand. For the turn lanes that are already there, additional left-hand turn lanes that aren't there and, uh. Reduction of, uh, speeds, I think was the other issue that we addressed.
Especially what you said, Kevin. So now supposedly they renewed the J-turns. But what are they doing with the money that they were gonna do with the J-turns? They were gonna do the overlay. We need to spend some of that money to still get the safety for the public, I think.
It's like, uh, they, they feel like they were jilted or something and, and they had this perfect plan. From a bunch of Iowa engineers that they came up with and all of a sudden they've got. Such a public outcry against it that they had to take it out of their program. But now that.
At least we have revision.
Yeah, there's no revision. It's just a, okay, it's gone. There's no safety concerns being addressed.
Well, with the number of, of vehicles out there, the left-hand turn lanes are the option and, and means. The last four, if not five accidents that have happened there have all been rear ends, all of them have been rear ends because the guy can't get off the highway. You put a guy, the one that I know the most, cause I watched that and was a semi turning into the beam plant. If you're in a semi and you're making a left-hand turn and you don't have a turn lane and you're looking in your rearview mirror and you know that guy isn't seeing you. What do you do? You have no options. You have zero options. So give these people some turn lanes and, and Kevin and I both went. You know, to the people that we needed to get it stopped and. And I think that Chad Orne got mad at us. I really do. I, I think he kinda said, okay, fine, you have to get your turn, turn or your J-turns and you're not getting nothing else either.
Well, and I do think that that was the risk that they stated, um, you know, that if we. Don't go along with this, this is what they're gonna do and this is exactly what they did.
Well, how can they feel that the best public interest is involved when we just abandon ship?
Yep.
I mean, I live out there. I, I live there.
You, you know, and I think we, we made that perfectly clear at the public meetings that they held. Was that we weren't in favor of these J-turns, that they weren't gonna work in the situation, uh, the environment that we have out there with the, the high volume of agricultural traffic. Recreational vehicles and commercial vehicles that are turning in and out of that, uh, the facilities along there and they just disregarded it.
Yeah, they just, like, we don't matter anymore. It's like. It's like we were their puppet and they were gonna give us this toy to deal with and we took their toy and told them we didn't want it and now they're mad. And it's like, so you're gonna get a mill and overlay, but you're not gonna get any safety out of it. Which would be, which would be an absolute mistake. If they milled an overlay that road without putting in turn lanes would be an absolute disaster. I mean, Brian sees it every day. You guys are out there. I mean, it's a, it's a mess sometimes.
I, I agree with you, Tom. I don't think you could talk to anybody out there that isn't concerned for the speed.
Yeah.
Now, it's a, it's an incredible injustice that they're doing.
So I, I was with Kevin. We, we drove it and we kinda picked out the main ones and then we listed them as whatever. But when I went skiing this year, when you turn on Laurel Montana and you go up to Red Lodge, they put in a, a four-lane highway there for about thirty, thirty-five miles. Every single turn has a, has a turn lane. Don't matter if it turns into a field, a farm or nowhere, it got a turn lane. So is Montana smarter than us that everybody got such a good turn lane to get off this highway? And that's brand new. It's like three, four years old. It's all it is.
Yep.
And their technology said, if you're gonna make a left-hand turn, give me a turn lane. You know, we're just, they're just, I don't know, they're mad at us.
Uh, J, J-turns didn't make any sense at all and, uh. You know.
Well, I talked to most of you guys about it. I come out of my house or my farm and there are some days I am the only car on the road. So now I gotta make a right-hand turn for three quarters of a mile so I can go left.
Makes no sense.
And that's what we preach to those guys. You know what? You know, I think we're all on the same boat, but somehow we gotta get the boat going in the right direction so we get some turn lanes out there.
Yep, so, and, you, you know, may, maybe we expand the, the list of, that we CC this letter to, uh, for public comment. You know, because I just included, um, the, the director of DOT and, and, uh, I think that was a good idea, including our local representatives on that list as well. Um, so we'll do that. We, we have those contacts that we can include and so on. And I don't know, the, you saw the letter, um, do we need to make it harsher or, um, more direct?
What do you think, Paul? I have not seen the letter.
I think it's in teams, um.
I definitely believe we're gonna need your help on this one vote so that we don't go over the vote either. I mean, we do wanna get their attention, but also we don't wanna go to the extreme to even get mad or don't give us anything.
Well.
I think we're willing to work with them, but they gotta be willing to work with us.
I, I think as a state or federal highway that they have to, you know, put that on their road project list of a mill and overlay. I think that was part of the whole thing, but, you know, just to take off the. The safety enhancements that we were asking for because we didn't, you know, see it the same way they saw it. I think is, how'd you state that last meeting, Commissioner Destron? Like, uh, adolescent, middle-aged, you know.
I mean, is there, is there. Is there something that we should put in here of containing, there's been five accidents.
Well, it's been a lot.
Fatal, I mean, you're having this fatal accident.
But they've all been rear ends lately, yes.
I don't know, maybe just, can you put something like that in there? How can you not say that this is a safety concern when we, uh, we, there've been three or four fatal accidents?
No.
You know? That's gotta be.
Well, they, they, they know all the statistics. They're, they're the ones that did, uh, the J-turn studies and they.
The head injury and side impact, they don't know.
Yep.
One thing to keep in mind is the solicit, solicitation views are due tomorrow, but we could send other letters.
Uh, no, aren't they due, what, the thirtieth of July?
Well, I was. I could be right, right?
Let me, uh.
But the letters we send to the districts, they.
I drive that road every day, two, three times going to the campground. And I see what happens.
He closes up that dirt.
Yeah, yeah, very good. And it doesn't matter, is that people get on their cell phones at the same time, neither.
Well, that's what it is. It's distracted driving. You, you guys go to all those and. I'd say ninety percent of them is a distracted driver. Just didn't see what was going on in front of them, you know. It's all, you know, in a matter of seconds.
And you know, the other problem with that, with the semi part of that, even with the turning lane, that turn to go across it isn't wide enough to make a good turn either.
even with the turning lane, that turn to go past it isn't wide enough to make a good turn either.
They almost need to do what they did out at Butler.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's what they did at Laramore. Laramore was stated to have a J-turn and they fought it just like we did. And then they widened their middles so that the turns are head-on. So if you're coming left and you're going right and you guys are looking at each other, so you know what's in front of you. They just widened them out.
Yep.
And I'm not saying some of those, you know, like the Bean Plant or where the ready mix is going up, that's a major turn where the control room is. You know, the campground, we need a left coming from the east. They gave us a right coming from the west, which you have a shoulder in the Roman. It was just backwards.
So this is probably... So like the lighting and stuff that they've already stated in the project? In your opinion, is that... They must have some kind of standard they have to go by. So are they thinking that what they are doing is going to satisfy the standard?
I think that lighting is just at the rest area.
The lighting is at the mile lines.
At the mile lines?
Like your driveway, wherever there's a section line. You know, like the prairie, they've got this lighting. Well, it's the same thing. Every mile line.
But every one of those section lines should have a left turn because it's a major road.
Right.
You know, I know our truck drivers, we try to teach them, and same with you, Kevin, to see what's behind you and do the best you can. But man, sometimes people are crazy. I mean, they just don't pay attention.
Well, with the Altmark getting rear-ended and...
Same thing.
You know, that was a distracted driver and he can't get over any better than Dwight did. I mean, Dwight, pretty... He was dedicated to making sure his lights work and, you know, all those things and that. You know, and he wasn't even turning. He was just driving down the road.
Way the same thing in front of our...
Yeah.
Got ran right into the back, I guess.
Yep.
On the cell phone. I mean, just... But you can't, I mean, I don't know, you know, that's what I preached to the guy from Bismarck. I said, I said, you can't fix distracted driving. And he says, oh, yeah, we're trying. And I just said, huh, good luck. I mean, you know, but, so give the guys who aren't distracted a way to get out of the way.
At least a chance, right?
At least a chance, you know?
I don't know, maybe the only other thing you could maybe add to the letter that... I don't think is in there, whatever, your copy or whatever, but it's, is where you said, you know, we wouldn't need a visit or whatever, with a maybe ask for a response, specifically ask for a response because, you know, we've got citizens or whatever that we have to answer to. Maybe, you know, in lieu of getting harsher, maybe just request a response by a certain date so we know.
And you could put that in there.
They would like that response for our patrons.
Right. So that they know that we're reaching out to you guys.
Yeah, we haven't gotten any response at all from them since last April when we sent in the letters.
Nothing.
Well, other than the fact that the J-turns got eliminated.
Yeah.
Did you get that letter? But did you get a letter saying that the J-turns were eliminated?
No, no, we didn't get anything. The county did, right? One, two...
I heard it on the radio.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on the radio and Jeff's office got a notice. And Jeff and I sat in his office and called this org down there. He verified that, yes, the J-turns were eliminated. And he told me at that time that all they had in the scope of that plan at that time was a melon overlay and that any request for any additional improvements to that quarter would have to come from a public entity. He said, so make sure your letters come from a public entity in your area. So the county sent a letter in, township sent a letter in.
Maybe some of those residences out there need to send a letter also.
Well, it has to be from a public entity.
It has to be township or county.
Yep.
Right.
So...
He stated like it had to be a government agency.
Yeah, right. He did.
Yeah.
Well, we'll get what we get, I guess. But you guys were sending the letter and let me know when you send it. I'll follow up with a bunch of letters. And I think it's a good idea, like you said, ask for a reply so that we know what's going to happen.
Who has the Kevin's PowerPoint now right now? We, Ian? He said, we, us, we have to... Let's get a meeting on the books sometime. I want to say it on a Sunday. Cool back out?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll agree with you. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we almost need to make them give you an answer because the longer they're quiet, then pretty soon they're going to say, yeah, well, that deadline came and went.
Yep.
So we need to, yeah. You guys are smart. We guys don't, I'm just, we're just being honest back here.
So we'll have a... Can we double check? Because I think that Chris, do you have that email, Kevin? That I sent you, I forwarded you from that Chris Maples?
Oh, yes.
Yep. What was the, the date was July thirtieth, correct? Because he sent it to my other email, but I don't have it on this.
Only sooner we get this to them, I wouldn't say wait for the deadline. It's getting through. It wasn't possible. That way we're not in that situation where you didn't meet the deadline.
Yeah.
On or before July thirty, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. So we plan on having another meeting with, for budgets prior to our August first meeting. So let's refine the letter that we have. We'll refine who we're CCing it to. And Wayne and Bill can get together with Bo and Ward Smith to make sure that we're not stepping on legal toes and sound like a winner.
I do have a question and I'm not trying to get us out of bounds here, but do we know what was the project tied to any federal dollars?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure they should do that.
Yeah.
Because that might be a reason that we are not getting turn lanes because the feds may have said, here are dollars for J-turns, but...
But then they need to clarify that to us.
I agree. We deserve a response, but I'm just saying that, Rick, that may be the reason that we're not seeing it. That being said, it should still be communicated. I think that's the bigger issue here. So we don't know where the money's coming from.
Well, I thought the issue was safety from the meetings I attended. It wasn't about the J-turn. That's how they were going to make the safety better. So if the federal dollars were for a safety issue, that's what we need to know.
I understood it the same way you did.
Yeah, I thought it was safety. It wasn't. This is only going for a J-turn. It was for safety for the Highway Two quarter.
And I, that's the way I understand it as well. I think sometimes maybe it gets lost in translation from government agency to government agency. But we'll try to get an answer as best we can.
But anyway, that the melon overlay doesn't address that one iota.
No.
No. So if it's tied to safety, then this project scope doesn't look at that at all. And that's why...
That's kind of how it all started, was the safety thing.
Right.
Before you guys were ever the commissioners.
Yep.
I think it was like ten or fifteen years and Kevin was probably still at the county. It's when they went to the state and said, well, we need some safety here. Well, then it kind of got dismissed for like three, four years. And then some guys came in and, you know, and then they just said, well, this is what we're going to do. Well, they didn't really ask us. They had a meeting. And there was a lot of people in opposition, but they didn't. That guy down there didn't listen to that meeting. He was at that meeting only for satisfaction, just to say, I had a meeting. Was not to listen to anybody at that meeting. Because he was going those J-turns. But until we finally pushed enough buttons to get us out. He was, we were going to be the J-turn people, you know?
Yep. Okay. Moving on, we'll address the letter, our special meeting that we have prior to August one, making sure that it gets in the right hands.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for getting home at seven o'clock.
Sorry.
No, it's, it's, we've just got something that needs to happen, so thank you for coming in.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, budgets. Now the merit...
We haven't said yet. Sometime prior to... Probably looking at, are you thinking next week or? Yeah, well, they have to be next week, I'm guessing.
Sounds good.
So... They start, your budget starts on page twenty-three.
Blue tab.
Blue tab.
I don't have the page numbers, so we got one.
We got one. So I'm going to think Andy and our arts and crafts.
So what, what budget is twenty-three?
Blacktop.
Blacktop, alright. That includes our paving project for...
Next summer?
Which is about two-point-one thing, something like that. But part of that is coming out of the Prairie Dog Fund, one and a half thing. That's kind of written down below there. We didn't really have a budget sheet for that, but... That's what's in the Prairie Dog Fund also at the moment. It also includes the, our ER project, in other words, where the culverts washed out. There's pavement busted out in three or four places. Ramsey County Ten is one of them. But those four projects add to about nine-hundred-and-seventy thousand, engineering and everything. So that's all in that budget. Our paving for next year and then the fixing of the ER. Emergency relief, that's the easiest way to figure out what those are. Any questions there?
They'll be the repair of Ramsey County Ten and Three?
Ten and Three, let me think about this. And Four, Four by Friggi, Prairie Roads got an open cut. And Nine, Way Up Car by Hampton, Two, Four.
Well, there'll be no, I'm raising my funds, so that's it.
Not yet. They've got, the ER dollars are here, but the feds set new guidelines, so to speak, of what groups we have to jump through. And the state is preparing documents, whatever they're doing, to make sure that we go through the right groups right now before they start releasing money. And then we'll have to hire an engineer. We got to solicit for views, for solicit for invitations, for engineering. Go through that, just like we did with this bridge number. Same thing. Takes about two months to do that, two months to design it. So we're looking at next year for sure. Well, it may be more than two months of design, but anyway, it's going to be next year.
Yeah, I'm going to believe it. But whatever it's like, you can get the field work done. Fall, right, at a close-in place.
Are they still calling it Prairie Dog money or are they calling it legacy?
I have a good question. Just go for money immediately.
That's two different things.
Yeah.
Yep, that's two different...
It's the way the buckets go.
Yep, because I have to set up another account for that.
Legacy, cool.
Because one of them's not, they're not coming in, they'll come in in twenty-four, but not twenty-five? Is that the deal?
We won't get any Prairie Dog money in twenty-four.
In twenty-four.
Because we received it in twenty-three.
No, they, they, the Indy Cruise got pulled at that end, so...
The buckets won.
We got Prairie Dogs, so we got pushed out.
Okay, any questions on Blacktop? What's your next one?
County Road.
County Road is, first line out of there, courses of salaries for, just for myself and administrative side, quick charges for insurance and those benefits. Capitally is for culverts that we stock for resale and also for attachment, one attachment for the skid steer and rental of equipment, which amounts to about twenty thousand for rental of equipment. Culverts for resale are about a hundred-and-fifty thousand, so that's the biggest bulk for that. The next one, construction. We will be doing Ramsey County, traveling Ramsey County Four from seven to eight, like from Brockett North, if that makes sense. Ramsey County Six, just right by its south of them. That's just, that's the two travel projects for next year. I have Man water figured in on that total. Repairing soft spots, like when we till in the cement. Overlay patches, which is fifty thousand. So that's all in that two-hundred-and-five thousand. Miscellaneous is just a hundred-and-fifty thousand as for projects that come up that we don't know about yet. And every year they see the captains. Any questions on that budget?
So basically this overlay, do we update nothing already or hasn't even?
No, forgot.
So you're still...
That's my reading.
Yeah. We're still...
That's just a next one, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
This is the next one, County Bridge.
Yes.
I actually just left that the same as it was la, pretty much the same as it was last year. Twenty thousand dollars for culverts. That's the second construction for the supplies and materials, the first part of it. And... The rental of equipment is also in there. And then the twenty thousand is for, the construction part is for the bridge inspections that the state's doing for us. So that's a whole one hundred-and-sixteen thousand. We really don't have any bridges planned for next year, but for instance, this year we got one site that had seven culverts that we need to replace. So I'm anticipating something like that in that ninety-six thousand. Any questions on that one? Highway tax, that's next.
Yes.
Alright, salaries, of course, but the schedule, um. Work time, I did leave that the same as it was, we have kind of a calendar and heat up our overtime this year, but hoping for long winter. Fix charges is our insurance benefits, so. We were just a little bit over actual costs last year, so I left that number the same. Unemployment is for if somebody quits or whatever, files for unemployment, that's, you pay out of that fund. Some areas, we don't even use any of it, but that's what the line items for. Insurance is for vehicles, buildings, workers comp. Which is about twenty-two thousand. Uh, drug and alcohol testing is in there. Travel, that's the same. Utilities is up slightly because of the heat costs, electricity costs, are up. We also take phone, water and garbage out of that. Office supplies, we're looking at getting two new computers. And screens and everything go with them, so I raised that up considerably. Also out of there is janitor supplies, postage, our clothing allowance, advertising for projects. And our safety equipment, clothes, gloves, whatever, safety glasses, that type of stuff. Uh, gas, oil and fuel, this is always a tough one, we don't know what a piece of fuel's gonna cost. So I raised it up, but we're over, we're gonna be over our budget on that this year. So I raised that up again to try and reflect the rate of fuel costs. Supplies and materials includes. Like our stock piles at the yard, gravel, sand, rip rap. Cutting edges, our snow blades, all the filters that we buy, tires that we buy. Road oil for patch and hole for, or patch and crack. All the coal mix and hot mix we need, antifreeze and oil, signs and posts. And shop supplies and tools all come under that two hundred and seven thousand five. Repairs and maintenance is actual repairs and maintenance on equipment. Our fleet's getting moved, so I, I didn't raise anything. Capital outlay, this is where the tractor and snow blower are in there. And also put in for a new low, low boy trailer, a hydraulic low boy trailer. Any questions on that? Seven Prairie Dogs next.
Road program?
Road program?
What is?
Road program.
It's a seven thirty twenty.
Yeah.
So that's our chip seal program, next year will be chip sealed in Ramsey County two, Elks Drive. Prairie, Prairie Road and Wood Retten Road, that's a chip seal now. That includes that project, all the chips for it, and then the striping that we normally do every year. I mean, there will be striping for that project, and every three years we strike, so we do like forty thousand strike.
So it should be eight hundred thousand?
Eight hundred thousand.
Okay.
Do you want to?
Twenty or just eight, is even?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. Any questions on that budget?
Flood.
Yeah, all the flood there.
Maybe two.
So basically, you can see the bottom line says two thousand nine foot, two thousand ten foot, eleven foot, thirteen foot are all done. And that's the money that was left over from the admin money, so we can use that for. Basically whatever we want. So I just put totals in of what money's there to spend, we haven't spent any of it in years, but it's there if we need it to, if we need it or something.
So can we close those out?
Yep, absolutely.
And just put them into?
The one. Yep. Twenty-two, the, twenty, twenty-two disaster, the townships stopped over right now. And there's, I don't know if it shows on your pages, but there's like, I suppose a million and a half in there, maybe a little short of that. But I put down a million to spend out of there, because the townships will be doing all their grappling and spending for funeral money. So that would be part of that million dollars. And just like, just a heads up there, that as those invoices come in for payment to the townships. They quite often get over twenty-five hundred dollars, so we just pay them, I mean, it's not like it's the county's money, it's actually the township's money. So we're just writing checks as we get them, if you guys don't approve them, basically.
Oh, because the money that's coming in?
Yep, it was township's money, I wanted to split my story. Any questions there?
You said twenty thirteen is the most.
Thirteen is most, yes. And these are probably rough fingers, they're probably dollars and cents on there.
Does that, can that go into general fund or does it have to stay with the highway or?
I think they meant it to stay with the highway, but.
Shouldn't we do that with some, maybe this?
Yep, we just spent it on equipment.
Being like, yeah, yeah.
We bought motorbenders many years ago for. I think they would like to see it left in the high end for highway use, maintenance use, maintenance, procurement, whatever, whatever, I mean.
Can we, we could put it in highway emergency fund then?
Yep, yep. By one year, we, when we bonded that money, you know, that's kind of the thought of keeping this.
Right.
Available, rather than bonding or something.
Obviously, it comes with ten areas, what's that, put it in the emergency areas in town. I think that was bonded.
Oh, yeah, if it had, then we could use it, absolutely, yeah.
And where'd you say cemetery was?
Seventy-two hundred, which.
I think that's a different number, so. I was thinking a few years ago.
Okay.
I think the century code only gives us a hundred and one, whatever.
It's not very much.
It doesn't, it never covers our costs, but. You know?
You have guys go out and do that or do you contract with private individuals?
We do about thirteen of them at that. Of course, we hold the shopyards too, but we do thirteen cemeteries. And there's many, many more out there, just that somebody else is doing that, we, we don't pay for that, we don't help them out or whatever. I don't know how that program honestly works.
Great, great. Are they all on a, um, personal deal, you know? Cause thirteen's a lot, then you say there's additional after that.
Oh, yeah, many, many more.
But some, but aren't some of those, like, they still have a?
Some of them still have a church type tool.
Right, right, or a church board or something, you know?
Basically, you've got deep in it.
Yep, exactly.
There's some we can't get to, right now.
You know, some of them are a lot, you know? Anything else for Kevin? Kevin, anything else for us?
No, it's all.
Lot of numbers.
Yes. This is like, the deed years are my expensive years for, because we do a payment project also.
Okay, uh, Bo asked if he could get pumped up and leapfrog into that contract for deed discussion. That we have on our agenda, is the, if you bid.
So the reason I'm asking is while you guys finish the other stuff, I can go fix this and then we all don't have to stay. So, um, work needs some daddy time. Uh, the one in the share drive is not up to date, I passed out different copies. For all intents and purposes, they are pretty much identical. This, with the.
Sort of the money way.
The money is different and the legal description on the back is different, okay? After many months of going around and around with the state tax commissioner's office, this is the prescribed one. This is the official form, they created it for us. I filled it out, okay? Sent this out to Rob Hubbard, who is the gentleman who bid on the properties. I explained to him that we will be using the numbers that were bid. And if we get that attorney general's opinion and that comes back with a different answer, we'll cut him new contracts, okay? He did have some requests for clarification. He asked that the date of the contract would be dated for whenever it's actually signed. So that's the first, it says fifteenth of November is what I put in, cause that's the day that he bid. That's an easy change, I don't see any issue with that, anybody have any problem with that? Okay, he also asked for clarification about the tax years, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one inclusive. He believes that it also contains twenty twenty-two, is that correct, Candy?
Yep.
Okay, so then I will change that to twenty twenty-two and make that correction. Um, he also, uh, later on down. There's a portion that says, has provided an NDCC, do you guys see that, in the bottom third of the page in the middle there? Um, he didn't like thirty days notice, he provided me a section of century code for land contracts and contracts for deed. It just goes into a little more depth, but I think that's a good change too, that he asked for. I don't think it puts us in any worse position than we're already in. So the only thing that you all need to decide on is what the interest rate for the contract for deed will be. So we've got ten years of age limit? According to statute, he can have up to ten years, correct? You can charge interest up to twelve percent, that's your cap rate. Um, I put six percent as the placeholder, because that is what the average market interest rate was on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. On the day that he bid on this. And had we had the forms and everything was in order. That's what presumably the interest rate would have been on that date. However, you all get to decide what you want to set interest at. As long as it's under twelve percent.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, if we're changing the date till the date it's signed, then we should change the interest rate to an average date.
You can do that?
I do, that's my opinion. My opinion, I think, should be that, why are we becoming the whole, why are we becoming the bank? I would like to see it so that maybe the individual, especially the thirty-five hundred dollars, three dollars, nine hundred, whatever, ten years, pay that. Maybe if you go with the bank rate is, he's probably gonna be like, yeah, I wanna ride it out ten years, if you go more along the bank rate is. Maybe he goes and gets a loan at your base card, he don't have to carry it. You know what I'm saying?
I, I understand what you're saying.
I don't wanna have this every time we have a foreclosure, because we'll be becoming the bank. So, I don't, and you said we could do up to the, the, maybe not twelve percent, but be at least a percent up here.
Well, let me provide some clarification on this. In case you aren't aware, he is actively trying to sell the properties, but without this signed contract, he has a clouded title. So no sale will finish. So I anticipate that once he gets this, he's gonna move the properties and pay off the contract for deed immediately, right? Cause if he wants to transfer title to somebody else.
He has to pay that off.
He has to, right?
And that's, here, if he was the seller, he'd have to pay it.
Um, it, it doesn't say that outright, but yes, that, that's, you know, I don't have a clear title. Right, so if, if he owns it and he wants to sell it to Lee, he's gotta pay off his mortgages, somebody's gotta pay it off. Before the next person can have a clear title. So. That, maybe that informs your interest rate discussion a little bit, the other thing that you need to know is throughout this process. We have found an attorney general's opinion that says the county gets to decide if it's a contract for deed or a cash sale. And Candy and I have been working to update our terms of sale, we're not, we're not doing contract reviews ever again. This whole process has.
Dragged out too long?
Correct, it's been a huge rigmarole, and so we are just going to avoid that going forward, so this is a one and only kind of situation. Of south of this to cash. Yep, due on the night of.
But how was it before?
Correct.
But we got a show to the body.
Right, and, and I don't, I don't have any grudges against Rob Hubbard, because he, he presented it the way he did. And it's written right there in century code, and I, I can't argue with that, right?
Uh, I do agree with Lee that if he wants a date change, we will, at least the interest rate doesn't lose the date. Well, I mean, it's fair. And I think it's to your point, but if we're in the process of changing.
This is a one type of setting I have.
Yeah, if we're, if we're getting a change, we're, we're in a solid position, I don't have to do this again.
Yeah.
I would say just whatever the interest rate is going today.
Okay.
You know, or the date, whatever.
I can under, I can understand that, um.
It's gonna encourage him, just do whatever he's doing, and we don't have to set a present.
I agree.
You know, we're gonna make people do it in the future, because we're gonna change how we do business properly. So let's get, yeah, let's get it done and get it over with.
So just a clarifying question, so I don't think it is, but if today's interest rate is above twelve, then we're.
Well, that has to be.
Then we're going, yeah, well, yeah, we have to, do we have a minimum, so say today's interest rate is, I, I know it's not, but say it's one and a half. You guys got one and a half in here?
Yeah, but, I mean, there were today's interest rates, we'll write it off, I mean, we only go to twelve.
Yeah, but I mean, there were today's interest rates. We'll write it off. I mean, we only go to twelve. But if it's in his, if it's in his benefit and it turns out to be five, whatever, maybe I, I guess.
Since it's gonna be a one type minimum, I have to agree with you. But if this was gonna be on one thing, I don't wanna be someone's banker.
No, I, I totally agree.
And you have enough headaches to every year. You gotta collect this month.
No, just write it out. Whatever it is, it is.
Okay, I can do that. Um, and then. So I'll, I'll adjust the numbers in yellow that I typed out to whatever the interest, whatever the math works out to be. And then. If you flip it to the backside. I will have Jeff and Candy sign tonight and stamp it with the county seal. And then whenever he signs is when it's executed. We'll, we'll file a copy with the recorder's office. They'll have a clear title. And then it's just a matter of if the attorney general comes back and says, Graham's coming, you did your sale. And if we do, then we gotta execute a different contract for deed. That's just how it is.
Great.
The word block.
Pardon?
The word block. Is it P and C in the legal description?
Which one? Top right.
Devil's Lake property.
Good catch. We'll fix that too. Do we need a, a motion on this, Jeff?
On the interest rate you do.
Yep.
Everything else is just a change in the contract. I'll, I'll make that motion. We'll use current interest rate to correct the contract for deed and get it signed tonight.
Okay?
So.
You mean second?
Second.
Okay.
That's okay. I wanna make sure it's clear.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we go ahead and make the recommended changes to the contract for deed. Adjusting the interest rate to reflect today's date.
I would ask for a roll call vote on this one.
Okay. And. We'll do a roll call vote. What else was I gonna say?
I don't know. You stopped at she putting today's interest rates.
To today, to reflect today's date?
Yep. That is it?
I think so.
Okay.
I don't know. Is there anything else that needs to be adjusted, Bo?
I'm just gonna make those other few small changes we talked about.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the last paragraph on page one.
Let's see.
For Devil's Lake, yeah, Devil's Lake deed. So we're going to provide him a quick claim deed. Once everything is paid.
That is the prescribed form from the state tax commissioner's office. They wrote this. I did not. That is their language, um.
Because all we've ever given anyone is a county deed.
A tax deed, right? Pardon? We have the tax deed and we give them a county deed.
We give them a county deed.
I can make that change. There's no strong objection.
You know, because we're, we're only giving them what interest.
Oh, yeah.
That we have.
Correct.
You know, we're not responsible for any.
Legal.
Legal, like anything that goes with it. We're just, we're just giving them, you know, more or less the time that we held it in our name.
Paul's not sort of quick claim minutes, right?
No.
We're just giving your interest, whatever interest you have, whether that's not for all.
I, I don't know. That's.
If it would make you feel better, I can.
I mean, I was just, I was just reading through it and remember.
Just a clarification, I would. So what I will do then is I will put a strike through through quick claim. And I will type in county in the other font like I did with the other added. So it is clear, um, but just so the recorders click, Paul is correct. I, I could give you a quick claim deed in our state building tomorrow. I don't have any interest in it. It doesn't mean anything.
But I mean, we, we don't, like, we don't have to change.
Yep.
I mean, just keep it.
Keep it simple. I agree.
Keep it to what the state. Wrote, but I just, I was reading, so I was.
Yep, I can do that, um.
Cancellation, should that have two L's?
You're talking in the third paragraph up. Again, written by the state tax commissioner. I, if you want me to change it, I can change it.
I'm just reading it apart, sorry.
No, and that's, that's good. I, I did my best not to mess with their form because I don't want there to be any barking about.
Yep.
That's not the prescribed form.
Yeah.
Cause we kinda gotten pinched with that earlier.
Yeah.
And, and to Mr. Hubbard's credit, he has done his research. He. He is invested and I, I think once we get the kinks in the process worked out. He could be a good asset to help him in buying and improving and selling properties. I do. So can't, can't blame him for lying. Seems done specifically. Anyway, back to the vote on the interest.
Sorry.
So there's no other changes to the motion or just it's the interest and today's date and. Okay, roll call please.
You just picking it apart. Yes, sir?
Aye.
Will Hungley?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Very good. I will go make these changes, send some final copies. I will bring them back down and we'll sign up tonight.
Thank you, Bo.
I would like to check just to make sure.
We have two. New business? You got a little left out? Yeah, Kevin was all done. So. Should have moved Bo up sooner because this will take about thirty seconds. Under new business, we have approve of the VA abatement.
Who'd approve the abatement for Paulson? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the abatement. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the special permit.
Who'd approve the permit for Manny Craft's wedding or Craft, put it there? Second.
Moved in second to approve the special permit. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, discussion on Guardian Flight Service. Uh, this is something that I thought, uh, I don't know how we should handle that or what we should do about it. But, um, a little over a week ago, we found out that, uh, I guess it was. Some of us later than others, but found out that Guardian decided to pull their helicopter service from, uh. Uh, their air ambulance service out of Devil's Lake. Uh, no advance notice, no forewarning. Uh, walked in apparently that morning and told employees that. All done. So last time, nine months ago, they gave us a two day or a three day notice, a heads up kind of thing. And we rallied the troops. We got, made calls to everybody but the Lord himself and, uh, we're able to get them to stick around. For a little while longer. That wasn't the case this time. Um, completely a business decision was what I was told that even though they quadrupled the number of flights. Uh, that they had in this year, they're still about ten flights a month short of meeting their goal. Of two hundred plus flights a, a year. And although they did say that sixty flights had to be canceled because of flight or because of weather. And, uh, which in North Dakota that happens and last winter particularly nasty. But I talked to their program district. Um, and that's basically what he said was, was a business decision made from way up high. And. Not, not sure how we combat that.
They sent letters out. I called them today and they sent letters out with all their membership. And you're gonna have the option to either keep it for the other twenty-eight states that they provide service. You know, do your on vacation, they told me, or they just gotta give a check for reimbursement. I'm gonna talk to them today.
That, that was certainly a concern because there was a big community-wide push. And not just citizens of Ramsey County, but our neighboring counties were, uh. Are really drastically concerned about it as well because it's vitally important for our rural communities to provide that emergency. Uh, response services and, uh, with rural ambulance services, um. Becoming. Non-existent. The time for healthcare to arrive to an accident scene or emergency medical, uh, situation. Um, sometimes that's the easiest way is a helicopter.
I don't know, Mike works in ER out there. She's, she is very not happy. So it will, it will cost lives.
Yes, it will. Um, social media has been blowing up with comments of individuals who. Think that they are convinced that they're here because of the service that they received from Lifelike. From the Guardian helicopter service, providing them transport to whether it's picking them up from an accident or.
I think we would have made, I think we could have met their number. If they would give us more time. Like, I think a two-year window would match their numbers. You know, cause our, the numbers drastically went up as far as flight, basically, they were less than.
Well, I know Chris and Sean were, were working. Pretty hard with rural communities on creating hot zones, um, where they could come in and land and, you know, this area is clear from. Wires and everything else, any other obstructions that, you know, this could be a pickup point in a community. And so, you know, ramping up those type of calls that they would have received. The other thing that I asked them last October when they had pulled out was. Provide us those numbers. Provide us what that shortfall is. And so we can either subsidize it locally. Um, subsidize it through state funds or come up with some sort of federal, um, funding for that type of subsidy. It, no, no different than a, uh, essential air service out the airport, bringing commercial air traffic in and out of the community of Devil's Lake. Essential air service for emergency response, um, is critically important for our community.
And basically, I think we did that with, uh. The membership guy.
Right.
I mean, that was a vocal opposite. I mean, I understand these ones, but sitting here listening to. Your ten flights a month short. You know, they're tough. That doesn't say well. I mean. For all the hell that we went through to get that thing built.
Yep.
You know, I mean, there's really unhappy people sat over there.
Yeah. No, it's a, you.
They're not that asshole like me, but no way, fortunately, with the hospital. Three people that. Are alive today because they got shot out there, you know?
And you're just helping my father and all, you're just three times.
So it's unfortunate that. Business and dollars plays a, a role in life-saving amenities for our community.
But it just goes to show. What we talked about here tonight since four o'clock, you know, fighting service. You know. We're not, we're not, we're not in the, we're not in the, uh.
Money-making industry.
Well, we're not in that position where we can make that. You know, I mean. Can you imagine what would hit the fan if we said, ah. We're gonna save a county, you know, the law enforcement center, we're gonna shut that down and save everybody five million dollars. You know, I mean.
I think it would probably cost you additional parts. It would cost prison.
Well, you know what, but I, I mean, we don't have that luxury where in this room.
Yep.
Where we can pass the buck until, well, the business decided from higher up than me.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's.
No way.
I don't know what, I don't think, right, but, you know, we just get to eat this one. And hopefully if somebody else comes in. And decides, you know, maybe we're more proactive with them and say, right up front, what? What can we do to make sure you don't leave here? You know, I, I don't know if there's another service thinking, well, coming up here. I, I don't know any of those questions, but I think. We take this as a learning. Opportunity and, and if somebody else does move in here, that we stay on top of it and, you know. Find out what their criteria is.
I think, if I remember right, there was thirteen people that lost their job?
Wow. It's probably. And that probably doesn't include people that didn't live here, that came here and worked on shit.
No. So it's really unfortunate and the, you know, the, the lack of communication with that company that he, um. And the heads up. You know, and I don't know if, if, uh, emergency services were notified prior to this happening. Or if it was just a complete surprise to everybody, but.
Something like the surprise, the employees email.
Yeah, and talking with that, that Laura Starks, he said. We don't give our employees a heads up because we don't want them to push themselves to meet a. An unattainable quota or fly in a dangerous situation to meet a, a quota that. It is, um. A, a lot of rehearsed, uh.
Absolutely. Cause I can't imagine where else that you can't think that.
Right, yep.
I mean, as much as going on in Williston, those quota between there and. I, I, I was months out there, um, they considered Williston.
One, one city, oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, yeah, they proved the roads up there. I'm sure they pet down their accidents and stuff. Maybe they had turning lanes. Oh.
They are adding a section of.
Really, I can't imagine Williston doesn't have enough air traffic. To get people where they need to go.
Right.
You know, I mean, yeah, they might have a more active hospital or whatever, but I know the fire department in Williston. Also runs vandal service and they transport a lot of people to business. Just to the level of, the different levels of care that we need. I, I, I heard Williston was the other one that got. Pulled, I just, that. Didn't compute at all.
It was definitely business property.
Yeah. So I know Sean's working with, uh, some other providers. Hopefully that works out and they can have somebody parking a rotary machine over there in the. In the hangar soon, but. You know, and then we probably like hell to keep them.
Well, that's why I say we use this as a learning experience and, and be asking them questions upfront, you know, instead of waiting.
We need to make sure that we're the number one customer as far as questions.
Right.
Not as far as being in the plane, but.
Yeah, you don't want to break your legs on that.
No, but we, we, we need to know, we have to have them answers before. And all of a sudden you start dishing out money and then they fall off too.
I was just a joke. It's tricky, doctor.
I don't care, I recognize, I just don't need the business. You break something in his leg before he goes and sells his bills or.
So anyway, uh. I, you know, I, I, I put it on here for discussion because I thought it was. I, you know, I, I, I put it on here for discussion, because I thought it was, uh, worth, worthwhile our time to address that situation. I'm not sure if there's anything at this point that can be done, um.
I think it's all future.
Yeah.
You know, so we get somebody, and we make sure that we keep the, take it upon ourselves, city, emergency services, whatever, to, to make sure that those guys, whoever those people are, that, um, you know, if it is a membership drive, if it is, you know, uh, landings, but whatever it takes to keep that communication open, that, that's the only, that's the only thing we can do.
I'd certainly like to thank their dedicated employees that did work here and saved the lives that they saved.
Yeah.
Um, the, you know, that's all to them and.
And hopefully, you know, maybe if they bring somebody in here, that we can keep them thirteen people, and that's not somebody Brad Barth has to replace after.
Right.
Because those are good paying jobs.
Yep, so. Anything else on that discussion? Okay, special meeting discussion for, uh, twenty twenty-four budgets. Everybody pull up their handy dandy calendars. Uh, so are we looking sometime next week? Because we're.
We can use the following week.
Yeah, so. What type of, uh, length or times you're look, looking at?
Three, a couple hours.
Okay.
Eight AM.
Everybody want, uh, a morning or an evening work, you know?
I could agree with that, prefer morning. Next Wednesday?
Next, let's see. Twenty-sixth?
Well, not good for me.
Not good for me either.
Sorry.
Well, I can make it.
I won't be here.
Twenty-fifth? Tuesday?
Monday? On vacation, I'll be, but I'm not going anywhere, so. I, I won't be here on the twenty-fifth, we're gonna be out at four eight. Monday, Tuesday, four eight. Sorry.
And the twenty-sixth, all day is gone?
For me, yeah. We forget the morning, it doesn't matter if it's on a Friday.
I'm not gonna be here Friday.
Thursday?
Well, it's Thursday.
And may, maybe you're. I don't know, days of the week.
Water day at the fair on Thursday, the twenty-seventh. But I haven't committed to that.
Only week two days in a row.
Thursday. Well, we need to meet prior to the thirtieth, so we can get that letter to DOT.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, this week.
I'm, after, after the LEC, I'm leaving for Dickinson.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, that's right.
Water convention.
Okay.
Oh, do we need a quorum?
During the budget, I like it. Good idea. Well, the only day nobody said it was Monday and twenty-fourth.
Well, I think it wasn't.
That's four eight.
Four eight, oh, Thursday, Monday, Tuesday.
So about six point seven? Unless it's that Tuesday night. I, I'm, I'm just saying that maybe that would work. I would be back. Because of the morning, they're done, that's done at noon.
Baseball schedule, uh, open on the twenty-fifth?
Um. I'm done with baseball.
Done with baseball?
Yep, we're officially done.
So should we work for the twenty-fifth at? Do we do four o'clock, or?
Is that what, is only a couple hours to be done? Cool, that then?
Well, I wanna try to get as many department heads
Yeah.
in that hour. To my, to every.
So, so you prefer them to be four or five?
Ten minutes.
Yeah, I said it.
I'm glad.
God damn it. Rest of us are making me want to be sitting here. I might have a shitty attitude.
Later he puts it, he shits in your.
Yep, we'll just, we'll just make it happen. Yep.
So to four o'clock?
Yep, well, this is, this is half a month.
That, that gives you enough time to get back from the fair, you think?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Four o'clock Tuesday.
Four o'clock Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
Good.
Somebody wanna make that a motion?
So, sorry.
Motion and second to have a special meeting at four PM on July twenty.
What's your, what's your objection, Felsen? Mine's done. And you figure a couple hours, right?
I'm gonna, as many people that are gonna be here, I'll.
They want money. You don't make it up, if you don't have money, they don't have to go up there.
And if they can't, they'll just have to go to the next meeting.
Well, there, not a lot of them that are gonna be overly difficult.
No.
Oh, you got the hardest one, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I, I like the, the biggest budgets with the most money, I.
Guess that goes to the areas, right?
Yeah. Because everybody else's budget should be just.
Pretty quick.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have a full same sign? Okay, I think we've got the other two, uh, taken care of. Contract to deed and the letter, no ones to the City of Fargo and Fargo to deed. Visitors? Any, uh, announcements? We're all good.
The Shanghai's no boundaries is this weekend.
Shanghai's no boundaries.
I hope all of us can check it out, or the other side of the answer.
Well, thank you for everything you do with that, Paul, and we, we thank you for that on. It's a fantastic opportunity, so.
Fun.
All right, um, Art's in the park is probably about over with, but, uh, Lions Club had asked for, uh, nonverishable food items, uh, that they're distributing, uh, contributing to the Hope Center. And we sent that out to employees, and I'm gonna applaud all the county employees who, uh, brought stuff in for the food drive today and dropped that out at the auditor's office, so.
We sent it out to the whole.
Yep, the entire, the entire building contributed and fanning out violence, so, good job, everybody. With that, the meeting's adjourned, thank you.